I'd like to welcome everyone to the February fourteenth, two thousand and eleven, meeting of the Goffstown Board of Selectmen. Everyone please rise for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, this is going to be a very short selectmen's meeting. It is Valentine's Day and we are all going to be going out to dinner with our significant others, our spouses, so it can only last no more than an hour, Steve. All right. I'm just joking, it's not April Fool's Day. But I just want to wish a happy Valentine's Day to my wife. And does anybody else want to do the same here, since we're here in a meeting?
Sure, it's not St. Patty's Day.
What? I can at least say that, you know, I did my piece, so. All right, our first order of business will be the acceptance, if there's any corrections, to the minutes. We have a few sets. January thirty-first is the first set of minutes.
Motion to accept with one correction.
Okay, we have a motion to accept. Do I have a second? Second, okay. Nick?
Page two.
Page two.
The motion under fireworks ordinance. And I believe it was to allow fireworks display according to the recommendation of the police and fire chief.
Yep.
Okay.
We included both.
Yep. All right, anything else on those? Not hearing anything. All those in favor of accepting the minutes of January thirty-first, say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Next is February seventh. That's both, yeah, February seventh.
Motion to accept.
Is there a second to that? I'll second it. Any corrections? February seventh minutes? Going once. You have some? Going twice, okay. All those in favor of accepting the meeting minutes of February seventh, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. And then we have two sets of non-public minutes. We'll start with the first one, which is December thirteenth.
Motion to accept all the sessions of non-public.
Okay, that'd be not only, okay. Because we have multiple sessions.
Second.
Okay, that's been seconded. Any corrections? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. And last but not least, December twentieth.
Motion to accept the two non-public sessions for December twentieth.
Seconded by David Pierce. Any corrections? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Five-zero, unanimous. Announcements, we have numerous announcements, so tomorrow, the Goffstown Lions Club is pleased to present Meet the Candidates Night, and that will take place at the Goffstown High School Media Center at seven PM, and it usually lasts about two hours. And that's your opportunity to meet all the candidates that are running for both school and town offices. So there's no charge and refreshments will be served. So again, that is Candidates Night sponsored by the Goffstown Lions Club tomorrow evening, which is a Tuesday, February fifteenth, from seven to nine PM. We have several nice emails and letters to our DPW, and I'll just read a few of them off. I'm sending you this message as I hope you can direct it to the right place. Would it be possible to have the snowbank at the intersection of Elm and Page Hill knocked down for visibility? Over the last few days, I've witnessed a few close calls, et cetera, et cetera. I appreciate all that your department has done to keep up with the snow. Goffstown's roads and sidewalks are in much better shape than other towns that I drive through. Thank you, Aaron Flint. Next one was from Andrew Maloney, also appreciative of the snow removal of the parking lot there. We've got another one from Deb Odette, who called in to say how impressed she was that the parking lot at the high school was done well. And I know that we got an email, I obviously had an email from superintendent of school Stacy Buckley, also thanking the DPW for the great work in getting the schools cleared. This one is from Jane White, to everyone involved in snow removal and keeping the roads and sidewalks clear this winter, thank you. You have done a wonderful job and many have noticed. We are not the only ones. Other towns should come to Goffstown to see how it is done. Congratulations on a great job. This one is from Violet Gerard. Last week, a crew of men trimmed my tree in front of my house that had large branches all over the street and that were being hit by trucks going by. I looked into it, but could not afford to have it trimmed. It might not be a big thing for most people, but for me, it was a big thing. I would like to thank, I'd like to give a big attaboy to your crew. I don't know all their names. They did a great job and I want you to know about, know about it, so. And that was all the DPW accolades. We also have a nice letter to the police chief. Dear Chief Sullivan, I wish to thank Officer Babcock and Patrol Sergeant Rivard for all of the concern and assistance they provided this family, this family the night of January twenty-third, their overall concern, courtesy and professionalism they displayed that night toward my son far exceeded what the situation called for. These officers are truly a credit to you and your department. I am honored to have such talented police officers such as these ensuring my family's safety. Again, my sincere thanks to Officer Babcock, Sergeant Rivard, as well as the other officers and medical staff which aided this family during a difficult time. And I believe that was it for announcements and commendations. Anything else? It's about six-ten, so this is an opportunity for anyone who would like to be heard in public comment. All I ask is that you try to limit your comments to three or four minutes, and as usual, you just state your name and your address. So is there anyone that would like to come before the board and address public comment? Ladies? Okay. Paula, you're here simply because we didn't have, we already set the agenda. Paula Belmore, she's from PLC. Land Conservancy, and you're the executive director. And so if you need more than three or four minutes, it's fine, but you know, this is your opportunity to address the board because we couldn't squeak, the agenda was already set, so.
Yeah, absolutely. I wanted to bring the board up to speed on the progress that has been made with the Blackfire Open Space subdivision. Sue and Brian have done a tremendous amount of work on this, helping us come to a, well, we think it's a solution. I have been working with the developer Keith Martell, with Brian, with Sue, and with David Neiman of the Conservation Commission. And what we intend to bring to the planning board is a proposal for PLC to take the fee ownership of the open space land related to that subdivision. While we would like to have gone forward with an easement, I think, given the needs of the town, looking forward, it would take a considerable amount of time and effort for all parties to negotiate the easement, draft it, do some additional work, and that would not work within the timeline of the developer. And we would risk protecting that land, which is the intent of both the Conservation Commission and the planning board. So this is a solution that all parties are in favor of, and we're hoping that it may even be possible to get the whole thing resolved at the next planning board meeting, if possible. I'm happy to answer any questions that the board might have about that. It is possible that you may need to consider rescinding your motion to accept the fee in the land if you think that would be appropriate.
Any comments from the board? I'll make a comment. It was my understanding that, as I had a conversation with Sue about five minutes prior to your meeting with her, and the understanding that we had was that we were, that obviously this whole project went through the planning process, and Phil, correct me if I misstate anything. Went through the planning process and there were some conditions that, part of it would be acceptance with some conditions that there, the open space would be owned by the town and then it would be stewarded by the PLC. That would be an acceptable easement, as long as there was an acceptable easement negotiated between PLC and the Board of Selectmen. Is that fair to say?
I don't know what the exact, pretty much.
Okay. It's, I just.
The approval actually said that the Board of Selectmen and PLC needed to issue appropriate approvals as to the protection of the land, but didn't specify how the land was to be protected. And that if that wasn't possible, the backup would be for the land to be deeded to a homeowners association.
Right. Now, when I left, we had a meeting in a non-public session, so the community knows, because it did involve land and negotiation. It was my understanding that we did have a tentative agreement. We had some, you know, the town had some desires, you know, for the use of the land, and that we had to work out, I guess, more of the specifics, but it was, it appeared to me that there was an agreement in principle, at least that was my general sense when we left. And I'm not so sure that that really has changed since we left. So I understand that our ultimate goal is, you know, we want to make sure this developer, you know, is able to proceed with his development.
I wouldn't say that's our ultimate goal.
What?
I think our ultimate goal is to have an open space subdivision that meets the, meets the terms of the master plan, the goals of the town, meets all the other needs of the town in terms of future lives.
Right, and I think, you know, one of the things that I want to, you know, try to make sure that there's no confusion so that the public understands is that, from my perspective, I'm not going to even speak for the board, if you want to nod your head in agreement, that's fine, but from my, the reason why I think there was some miscommunication is that the terms "open space" and "passive recreation" were linked together by members of either the planning board or conservation. That was not, I guess, implicit in what I thought of when I say, when I hear "open space," because in our master, in our development regs, there are different categories for that, and I think that's what the board wanted to convey, and that there are, because there are several different categories, there's recreation, open space, there's, like I said, there's four or five. So when I consider this, I look at it more as a recreational open space, that not just, say, passive recreation. And I think that's where there might have been some miscommunication.
Development ordinance, I could be wrong, you might have to help me out, Sue, but I don't think that they differentiate between types of recreation. You have public access, open space, natural open space, non-public access, but they don't really differentiate between the type of recreation and not the ordinance. And there certainly is two very different and distinct types of open space in your regulations, that being natural open space, which is something that typically PLC would do, and then public access open space, which is what the discussion centered around at the planning board level. And PLC is willing to commit to that level of an understanding in any deed.
Now, assuming that was the case, and now PLC would take ownership of this, of this land, what responsibilities would you have in terms of, one, would it be open to Goffstown residents? Okay. What about the management of the, of the land in terms of, if there's any type of abuses to it? Let's just say that, you know.
We would be, just as any other private landowner, we would have the same obligations that any private landowner would have.
Okay.
What we would be giving up is our right to post the land against public access. We would not have that right because this is coming into fee ownership with the understanding that it's public access open space. Unless the planning board chose to go natural open space, but that is not the nature of their discussion, so I have no reason to think that they would do it.
Yeah, just a follow-up on that though, Paula, just so that we're all clear and we're all kind of on the same page here. When you say that you can't post that land, then it's for, who regulates the usage of that land?
We would, what the current discussions are, that the, the language used in the subdivision regulation would be used in the deed, so that exactly what those regulations require is what would be required of that land. So it does require public access. However, you know, the degree of public access, things like that, aren't spelled out in the regulation. Now, the intent is that there would be trails and the passive type of recreation that we've been talking about, and that would be PLC's intent.
But I guess where.
It would not be deeded that way.
Okay, but I guess where I'm, my question then is, you talk about you have trails there. Who regulates the usage, let's say, for example, hours of operation?
PLC, as a private landowner, absolutely.
Okay, so you would regulate where people access the trails?
Mm-hmm.
Where people are allowed or not allowed to park? The hours, what they do on that, and if there are, as was mentioned, abuses, let's say, a couple of the abutters call, complain that there's people on the property, they're camping, they have fire, they're being rowdy, they can hear them, they think that they might be drinking or something. How is that handled then?
Well, I can't tell you how it's handled now because we haven't had that situation, but my sense would be that we would make an attempt to eliminate the problem, but definitely would make use of town services like police as a trespassing issue, as would any private landowner. I think we would not be giving up any rights as a private landowner, and that would be obviously imperative to us as an organization.
Right, well, I guess.
No camping would be allowed, so that would be very easy to, and there's, you know, New Hampshire has incredibly strong landowner liability limits and laws that are very protective of the landowner, so that's helpful.
Okay, right, thank you.
Does, you know, one of the things, obviously, we have protection under, you know, right to know with regard to negotiations. Does any, does any of the board members have any concerns about letting the public know what we desired publicly? I personally don't. I don't think it hurts our leverage or negotiating position at this point. I think it might clarify what we sought.
The only thing that I don't know is, I mean, I don't know where you are with that in case something were to change.
I'm just saying, even if it were to change, I don't think, is there anything that, David, you have?
The answer to your question is, no, I have no concerns. And you'll explain what we had desired. To me, the bottom line is that surveys were required, it took, it would take time, and all of this was to the detriment of the developer, and that's whom we did not want to put more barriers in front of.
Well, I would add to that. It was to the detriment, but it also, if he went to a homeowners association, you would lose that public access recreation opportunity for the town, as well as losing the protection of the land from a conservation point of view. So if everything that we did resulted in a homeowners association, I don't think anyone really would be winning, including the developer, because it would take him, he would have to draft those documents.
First and foremost, does any of the members have any concerns with me just advising the public as to what were the desires of our board collectively?
I don't, I don't have, I think we should, actually, because anyone watching this would be wondering, what are they talking about?
Yeah, and that's, and that's, that's part of, part of it, but, so as I said, as I said before, I mean, this involves a, it's a development before the planning board, it was conditionally approved, and there was a very large tract of land that's not part of the, say, the subdivision per se, because it's, there's either some wetlands there, there are, you know, it's, in some cases, it's not developable for homes. And the developer offered to, to give that extra land, I think it was like a hundred and twenty-seven, a hundred and forty acres, somewhere, it's a large number. The Board of Selectmen walked the property last fall, and when we met with Paula, our concern was that we were not desiring to put a, any type of huge structures on the site. There wasn't going to be a water park or anything. We wanted to provide first and foremost parking so that people could use the trails. We talked about the future use of the, of the property. We talked about the potential of having like a doors pond, if you've ever been into Manchester, where they have like a, there's like a bathroom there and there's like a small playground for children. We talked about those were the possibilities there, perhaps a pavilion or a warming hut if people wanted to do cross-country skiing. Those are the things that we talked about. The area is really not suitable for baseball fields and soccer fields per se. Arguably, there may be some points if you wanted to put a tennis court or a basketball court, but that really wasn't the board's intent. The board's intent was first and foremost parking, and then the ability for possibly restrooms or a warming hut or a pavilion down the road. And we had concerns that if, if there was, if it was just for, how shall we say, passive recreation with absolutely no structures on it, that that would limit the town's ability to develop the property in, and I guess in accordance with it being a park. Those were our desires. I guess what came out of that was the ability to construct an easement that would have allowed for that. Now, I personally don't think that the circumstances have really changed, and I don't know if it's an undue hardship on the developer, provided that if the planning board is okay with the conditions of that easement, and if PLC was in agreement with us and the board was okay with it, and now you have to work out the technicalities, now this board has to then weigh, the question is, what's better for the community, having it, you know, gone over to, having it fee simple interest given to PLC, or should the town take ownership of it with those stipulations that we mentioned? And that's, that's the question that we have before us, because even if we desire to say, okay, fine, PLC, you take it, we should at least let the planning board, you know, know that. So, Phil, you want to add?
Yeah, there was just, there was one other thing too that we had a discussion of, and it was setting the pin for the back corner of the property that the town would wind up being ownership, so that we could determine the distance from the dam and that if there was any breach of the dam, if the town had any liability. And without having that pin set and knowing where that corner of your property actually is, unless we had that set, we would not be able to know that. And we did not feel that we were doing, that was the best for the town to accept property not knowing exactly where that pin was, where that corner of the property was in relationship to a dam.
Anything else anybody want to add? Steve, Nick, you have anything?
Well, if I could, I guess that's, that's where I'm stuck. Did the planning board require that the documents be signed, or that we have agreement?
The condition of, the conditions of approval, and Sue jumped in if I get this wrong, because I'm going from memory. The conditions of approval were that the Board of Selectmen and PLC, that appropriate approvals were obtained from the Board of Selectmen and PLC as to the protection of the land, and that's the language I think I have a little bit.
Right, appropriate approvals need to be obtained.
And if that was not possible, then homeowners association. So those were your two options, to have Board of Selectmen and PLC come to an agreement on how the land was to be protected in keeping with the subdivision, and if we couldn't come to an agreement, the next thing would be the homeowners association.
That agreement was interpreted as a finished conservation easement.
By who?
Yeah.
By who?
By Brian. He thought the planning board would want to see a finished conservation easement.
They haven't said that. They just basically said the appropriate approvals. I guess where I'm coming from is, if at the compliance hearing.
Exactly.
The planning board is told that we've come to an agreement, PLC has come to an agreement, we need to work out technicalities as far as the actual surveying and setting the pin, or whatever needs to be done that might take some time, wouldn't that be sufficient to satisfy those requirements that we've come to agreements?
While I think that we were all in agreement as to a general principle, I do not think that I would be able to negotiate the terms of an easement sufficient for the planning board, because we have issues of the land and the topography and going out and actually being able to see what we're talking about that would need to be, I would need to be able to see those. We would need engineering plans in order for me to agree to those types of terms. We're not going to be able to do that until spring. So that's not, that was one of the biggest obstacles that we faced in trying to do this. The developer is very clear. If he can't move forward and catch the spring market, he's going to need to go to a homeowners association and move that way because his financing is contingent upon getting these approvals and all that. So we needed to find something that.
And when does the planning board meet next?
Twenty-fourth.
This month?
February twenty-fourth.
Mm-hmm. Is that something that can be brought to the planning board?
Yeah, sure.
To find out if this developer's approvals can be obtained simply by us having an agreement and not hold him up until the final paperwork is drafted and drawn and.
But I don't, what I'm saying is, I do not believe that PLC could come to an agreement with you until snow cover is, until we, you know, able to get out on the land and really talk about specifics, because what the town needs, and I'm not disputing the validity of those concerns, those are not things that I can agree to.
Without seeing the land.
Yeah. And I think it would be misleading to the planning board. We have an agreement in spirit, but how that applies to the land and some of the very specific and very strong feelings that some of the board members have about what the town needs are things that I would need to be taking back to my land protection committee, my board. We would need to go back out and walk the land again. And it would be a change from our typical situation. So I don't see that as being possible.
Thank you. That's weird, because you, you said, well, forget it.
I said that I agreed with what you were saying.
No, no, I'm not saying that, but you, when we met last week, and by the way, the board, our board met on a special session to address this, so the fact that the planning board maybe cannot meet at a special session, that's their prerogative, but we set a separate date for this issue. We were told that these easements are, there are, every town does them differently, and they do have parking lots, and so I don't think what we're asking is anything.
You are, Scott, because for example, Phil's need to have, and I'm not disputing the validity of his need, to have all municipal vehicles access easement land is far and above, beyond anything PLC would typically do. So you have valid concerns that need to be addressed, that you need to feel comfortable with, but those things would take time. We often reserve the right for us to provide parking on an easement area, but that's not what we're talking about here. In addition, we would be talking about excluding an area of the existing surveyed lot so that it's not under easement. That means going out, walking the land, we all need to agree where that line's going to be, based on what you want to do on the excluded area, and then we need to survey that. And we can't necessarily say, yes, we're going to agree with that line, when we can't get out there and see that line.
I gotta say, I got a different story when we sat together. I thought we had a meeting of the minds, and now I feel.
I think we did have a meeting of the minds.
Now we seem very far apart.
No, I remember very specifically saying to you, there's, there's expense involved here and there's time, and we can't do this until spring. That is exactly what I said to you, and I maintain that.
I guess I'm though a little concerned, confused, Paula, because I believe it was Keith that was in with you?
Derek.
Derek, I'm sorry. Derek that was in with you, and his title was?
He's a consultant for us. He's a name.
Okay, I thought though that he also thought that the, what the board was talking about, reserving an area for parking, that he thought that that was, he also had that in his mind.
Absolutely.
So I guess where, where I'm a little confused is, it seemed to me that on both sides of the table, there was a commonality as far as that, and he seemed to have that specific area on the maps that he had with him that would be there.
I do not think he had the specific area. We were able to discuss, and we would put hands on the map, and we'd say, in this area, this would probably work. But when you're talking about an agreement that the planning board is going to approve a subdivision on, you're not talking about saying, somewhere over here, we'll work this out. We need to know that it's going to work out. That's a different level of agreement, and that's all I'm saying. I do believe we had a complete meeting of the minds. I have no dispute with any of the specifics that we talked about. I felt confident we could work it out, including the language that you and I were talking about.
Right, because it was Derek specifically who's the one who came up and suggested taking that portion out of.
We talked about it in the office before we came over, and we looked at it, and I still.
Even before we discussed that with you, you were already discussing that, so that's, that's where I had the confusion, is that you had that discussion there, we had that discussion here, and now it's like.
I absolutely hold to that. What I am saying to you is, if you're going to take an agreement and say to the planning board that these two groups have reached agreement, that's a specificity that we were not talking about at that meeting, and to get to that level of specificity will take time. That's what I'm saying.
I have David, and then I'll get back to you.
I, I agree with what you're saying, and I, and we were on the same page. I think we're, we're talking around the issues here. What this board intended to happen to that land would take time. We'd have to, the snow has to melt. We have to walk the land to know exactly what piece of land could be excluded from development. Surveys would have to be done, land surveyor and paid for by some party. Once again, all that took time. And meanwhile, the results of that has to be a finished drawing presented to the planning board. And unfortunately, we're talking many months here, and the developer doesn't have that. And so their, his decision is to go with the fee through the land conservancy.
I guess my question is, there are issues such as municipal vehicles going through the easement. I, I guess, my question is, there are issues such as municipal vehicles going through the easement, and those items can be settled.
Hopefully.
Well, what I, I would imagine is, in order to come to an agreement, those items, whether we're setting land aside or not, those are issues that are within the easement wording that we would have to, um, agree to.
Correct.
And I would understand if we were saying, you know, somewhere on this land, we would like to put a parking lot, we don't know where. That obviously would mean someone actually going out and saying, this works, this works. There's not very many areas where a parking area could be.
Right there.
And if we were to sit down on a map and say, okay, we want one acre or two acres right here. Short of actually going out and then just laying the boundaries out. Would that be enough to, to come to an agreement? Because it wouldn't move to two acres here or here. It would be right in this area. And if you were going to accept a hundred and twenty-seven acres excluding two acres, now it's a hundred and twenty-five. How does that change?
I completely understand what you were saying, and I'm going to go back to the reality. The reality is, just that negotiation is going to take us at least a couple of weeks. Your developer, you committed to him, you would have an answer for him tonight, is that correct? You get, you told him you'd have an answer for him for two weeks. If he does not get his compliance. At hopefully the February twenty-fourth, I think we might get him to stretch it out to the next meeting. Um, he will go with the homeowners association, and we, we keep bringing this up, and it's, it's frustrating because we all feel like we're being held. You know, hostage to his spring market, but I can also appreciate his position. He was, he's approved to go with the homeowners association. There's nothing stopping him from doing that. And we have, he's, I don't believe he's bluffing. We have to decide if that's what we want, what is our best option at this point forward. And that really is.
Anyone else?
All right, just so I can get some clarification then. So if we were to go this route. And next spring would come. How would we address things such as parking and access and?
Which route are we talking about?
Where, where it goes to the PLC.
PLC would handle that.
And I guess.
It's out of our hands?
It's out of our hands. I guess, I guess what I'm looking for is, I guess, I think everyone sits here wondering, what's that reassurance? In other words, how will that, how will that work out?
The reassurance that the town would be receiving is, is only that which is in your subdivision regulations. Because that's honestly all the developer is bound to provide through this open space subdivision. He's obviously getting a benefit. There, you know, this open space subdivisions are to be a win-win for the town and the developer. But he's not, um, he's ready to go with a homeowners association and.
Right, so how does that differ? I mean, I think the, the planning board made a decision based upon two methods. Homeowners association or giving it to the town. Now we're going to give it to a third party. They have not had any public hearings on giving it to a third party. So how do they, how are they going to then, Phil, maybe, I've never served the planning board.
They wouldn't need public hearings, because it's not the town that's.
No, I understand that, but I'm saying is that.
They would have to go back to the planning board and change their approvals.
The planning board would have to then change their approval.
Right.
Because that wasn't included in their approval. And I, and I think, you know, what, what kind of, I'm just going to throw this on, on the table, is that, you know, this is like boiling down to, um. Whether it be the Conservation Commission or members of the planning board, I don't know who, who is responsible, but this whole notion of passive recreation. And I think the, our board's desire to, and then I keep on hearing things about our master plan in a park. But it's always passive recreation, and I think our board is saying, okay, we understand the passive recreation part. But if we're going to use this land, you do need some parking. You know, do we want people just to park on the side of a cul-de-sac, and then, you know, that's going to present a whole lot more problems? We talked about the need for a park. We talked about perhaps a restroom down the road, and who knows if, you know, that'll even happen. So I don't think this board was asking for anything outrageous, and, and all I keep on hearing about is, we have to make sure that the trees can breathe. And that's it. That's the only thing that's going to happen. Okay? Well, maybe not you Paula, but that's what I'm, I'm hearing from others. What? So, and, and I think, you know, myself, I'm looking at it more as a destination. Similar to like the rail trail where, where people know that there is dedicated parking, that they can go with their, their children, or they can go with a spouse. Go for a nice loop of a walk by the brook. If they have to use the bathroom, they're not going to go behind a tree. They're going to go into a, you know, and.
I think Scott though, I, not that, everything you're saying is perfectly valid. Unfortunately, that's not really an option for you right now.
I think it is though. I think it is, because I think that the difference is, and it goes back to what Selectman Campesano said, is that. The planning board, um, said that, uh, that provided there was an acceptable easement between PLC and the town, and I got the impression.
The planning board said appropriate approvals from the Board of Selectmen and PLC.
Right, and, you know, considering that we had an agreement in principle. Um, whether or not it takes three or four months to pin it and survey it. It's not, I don't, we're making this like we're redoing ground zero, and we're not. I mean, this is a hundred and twenty acres. We're looking to carve out two acres for a parking lot, and we're making this as if it's the big dig too, and it's not.
Because it makes.
But your, your developer is going to go with a homeowners association, and that's fine. I'm not.
Gets it going that way, because it, it really seems silly that he wants to give the land. We're willing to receive it, but if we're receiving it for the town, we're saying, we want to let them have access, access to it, and we're talking out of a hundred and twenty-seven acres. Two acres to park, and if that's the breakpoint, I gotta tell you, I'm going to sit here now saying, I guess it's broken.
But that's not the breakpoint. That, that's a spin of the reality of the situation.
But, but whatever, I mean.
Because PLC is certainly not saying, we can't do two acres for parking. What PLC is saying is, at this point, coming in this late in the game. And redefining the situation, we cannot work in, and have an agreement within a week. Now, how the town got to that point with the developer and with your regulations is not, I can't comment on that. What I can tell you is where we're at right now.
But the, but the planning board's jurisdiction is to, is to say, we are okay with this agreement in principle. And we are willing to give conditional approval to the applicant, provided that, um, there is an agreement in principle, and the details are worked out later, and that's all that we.
But the planning board's understanding of the conservation easement did not call for excluded areas or.
That's not true. That is not true. That's not, that is not my.
Well, conservation easement.
I watched that video. I watched.
That was presented to me, and the conservation easement that we presented back that was accepted, didn't discuss all those things.
I, I watched that meeting several times actually, and again, there is a huge. Uh, there are some members of the planning board that think that the word passive recreation and open space and natural are all synonymous. And then there are others who think that open space has other uses other than just leaving it its pristine, uh, condition. Um, and again, I think that there is agreement between this board, and by the way, this is unanimous on this board. It's not, it's not a three-two. It was five-zero. We want to respect the fact that this is a beautiful piece of property, and that it should be for, for trails, et cetera. But we wanted parking. We wanted, if someone had a heart attack, God forbid, on a trail, that we can get in there. If we had to, you know, for whatever, you know, municipal reasons, we had to go in and clear a tree out of something, we can, we could do it. Um, there was nothing in there that, that would not keep it in, in that, in that spirit.
You need to be clear those, because we are on public record right now, and we are sending a message to the community. What I was asked at that meeting was not for, to allow an ambulance to go in if someone had a heart attack. I was asked to agree that any municipal vehicle, and I said, if the town owns a fleet of ATVs, you're telling me I need to let them go ride all over this property? And the answer was yes, any municipal vehicle.
Because you typically do not limit. You would not, the town would not limit.
These are very, very significant terms that our lawyers would both need to work through. These things take time. And to spin that around to say that PLC is not willing to give up two acres for parking, or isn't going to allow access. Is an inaccurate representation of our discussion, and it angers me, because I, I was there with good intention. I do still believe we all want the same use of the property. I'm doing my best to ensure that the town of Goffstown has access to that open space. And that we don't lose it to a homeowners association, and there's no protection, no parking, no public access. If that is not suitable for the Board of Selectmen, I can't, I can't say, yes, PLC will agree to an easement. That hasn't been well thought out, that I haven't walked.
And you know, and I will say this, this is just me speaking, is that this is one project. This board, over the last two to, uh, four years since I've been on it, has approved, I think, two or three conservation easements. God only knows how many are going to come before this board again. So, you know, that, you know, relationships and, um. Good working relationships are, are critical, and it's not just this project. It's about ones in the past and ones that are going to be in the future. And I don't think that anything that this board requested was anything that was demanding or anything unreasonable. And by the way, for the record, this, this, this town does not even own an ATV, the town of Goffstown.
But we're talking about a perpetual document.
And I, and I understand.
You do not draft a legal document based on today that's going to last in perpetuity.
I think that's what Phil was trying to get there, because it is, because it does go, it is a perpetual piece, and that's why he was talking to me, he goes, and I'll give you an example. I, I, I knew someone who was in Clough, and he broke his leg. There was no ax, there was no way any vehicle was getting in there for him.
Whether they had approval or not.
Approval not. Eventually, they went in, and that was, you know, the, the EMS people, they ended up getting a four-wheeler, and they went in there and they got to him. I mean.
And that would be allowed.
Okay, so that's, I think that's what Phil was talking about. He wasn't saying make it a four-wheel park.
I understand that, but Steve, I'm going to go right back. I said very clearly, you mean to tell me that I would have to allow these recreational ATVs? And the answer was, yes, any municipal vehicle.
And, and, and going back to that, is that we, we deal with the same thing with our rails to trails. When we take on, and like you say, be, be it even if the PLC was to receive this. There's going to, and I'm not saying it's, it's going to be a four-wheeler or whatever. We don't know what's going to be fifty, a hundred years from now. But the reality would be just like with rails to trails. As we take on rails to trails, we now have to figure out a way to patrol it, or someone's injured. Or if something's going on, if somebody receives a complaint. Even if the PLC was to, was to take this land. And because we always were under the understanding of PLC takes it, they, they take care of everything, but, you know, through conversations that we've heard with.
The difference between fee and easement are the significant.
And, and, and so now the reality would be more of, you would just pick up the phone and say, hey, by the way, we have some problems out there. To, to the police department, police department would have to go out there. Is that my understanding?
No.
Well, then who would go out there?
If you owned, if you owned, Steve, a hundred and twenty-five acres.
Correct.
And you had posted it against trespassing and camping and whatever, and your neighbors were calling and saying, you've got people partying out there and camping, what would you do?
You would call the police department, so.
That is exactly what PLC would do, nothing more, nothing less.
Correct, and so my point being, and, and I agree with that, because what else, what, I mean, you have no, 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 no authority to enforce. How would they get out there anyway? What would you expect from them? I, I don't understand that some of this process a little bit, so I do agree with.
Would the police get out there?
Yeah, I mean.
That's all standard. We were not, PLC in that discussion with Phil, and I think Phil understood this. We were not disputing whether we, all of our easements actually say, you can go out there for agriculture, for forestry, for emergency services. That's all standard. It's when you want to use blanket language that says, any municipal vehicle, that's where we have a problem. And that was the nature of the discussion that night, and I think Phil and I actually, we understood what each other was saying. But he was trying to protect the interests of the town and say, we don't know what needs we're going to have in the future.
Who knows what kind of vehicle is we're going to have seventy-five years from now.
Right, and I'm saying, that's right, and so I can't agree to anything that says any.
But I think there is a meeting, Phil, when you, when, because I agree with Paul, when you put it into the terms of the use. It doesn't matter what the vehicle is. If it's a vehicle that's being used by the municipality for a search and rescue mission. That's, whether it's an ATV, a helicopter, a Segway, doesn't matter. It is allowed under the easement because there's a purpose for it. We're not just joyriding every week to do training back there because we feel like it. And that, I think, I'm sorry?
Or for maintenance.
Maintenance or emergency.
Right, that are appropriate for maintenance for whatever purposes of the easement. But going back, I think when the planning, when this goes back to the planning board. They had two choice, they had given us two choices, one for homeowners association and one for the town to accept it. So they're going to have to change that approval to go to a third party. So at the, at the same time, Phil, as our representative, you could bring up this possibility. And then they could make that decision whether they could conditionally approve it or.
But, um, I think that, that from, I'm, I'll, I think that our board was, was happy to accept the property. With the, you know, request that we, that we brought to Paula's attention.
And I think just to.
Which I highlighted the vast majority of them.
Yeah, and I think to expand on that while we're all here, I think it's been stated that both of us, when I say us, the five are here, and you and Derek. Were all in agreement that this was, this was a workable and doable, uh, uh, eas, uh, terminology in principle.
The whole question was timing.
Right.
Right, but the ultimately, this, there are many times when a deal goes through and you work out the, you know, the details. And you sign a, like a memorandum of understanding, and you, you do that. I mean, and I think if there's an agreement in principle. And, you know, and there's an acknowledgement that we're not looking for ten acres for parking, we're looking for two acres of parking. And then it's going to be close to the drainage, uh, the tension pond or the road, because we're going to have to be there anyway to clean it. I think that there's enough assurances to, to PLC Conservation Planning that we're not looking to put it in the back end of the spot. We're not looking to go and clear cut the property and put up a skating rink. I mean, we're, we're, we're simply trying to have accessible parking. And the potential future use of maybe a, uh, a restroom area, so.
What would you propose as far as the fees for the engineering plans and the surveying and things like that? I know that's sort of a sideline question. If we were to go that route, how would those be paid for?
Well.
I would say we're probably talking fifteen to twenty thousand to survey that off, maybe less, maybe ten to fifteen to survey that off.
I would think that the Conservation Commission would, you know, would, would chip in. I mean, you are conserving a hundred and something acres of.
Yeah, if I can add, just so that, you know, I guess the, the vision that, that we were looking at, just so that everybody. Other people might be able to, uh, up, if they ever been to the Rhododendron Park in Fitzwilliam. Okay, I guess that's, that's what the description that we had in my mind, it's, it's sort of, okay? That's a state park, but it is passive, okay? There's no active recreation, and there you go, and you have a parking area. And they have a little place that you can go to the bathroom if you needed to go to the bathroom, and they have a little kiosk, and they hand you out things, and you have the trails in there. So the discussions that we had was, you could have little trails in there for snow shoeing or different times of the year, and basically that's what we have, this parking area. And because we had a discussion with those parking spots that were there for the homeowners, and how, uh, we had concerns that down the road. When other people come and park there, that those people would come to the Board of Selectmen requesting that that parking be made for residents only. Because they had all these people now coming to use this hundred and twenty-eight acres. And this was a better use by having this parking area, well, not better use, but was an alternative. To eliminate and take some of that strain off of those, uh, those parking areas that was there and abuse of double, you know, parking beyond that. So I, I guess, perhaps that can give peo- people a clearer picture if you've been to the Rhododendron Park in Fitzwilliam. If not, go, it's great. Especially when they're in Bloom.
It is great, yeah.
All right, so Phil, you understand our, our position?
And I was just going to make a suggestion, if maybe we could put that kind of together in, in a memo.
Yeah.
A written memo, and we could have Brian put that to the planning board? If that's agreeable, whatever.
Yeah. Anything else? Steve, Nick, you have anything else?
I would reiterate to you that if you, and it's, it's absolutely your choice, if you go back to the planning board now and say, we'd like to discuss these different uses of the land. I'm very confident in telling you that your developer is out. And if that's what you're choosing for the town, that's why it's not.
Why you, why do you say that? Because.
Because he will not meet his timeline.
Okay, wait, wait, wait. If the planning board grants him approval.
We would have to have this ready to go by February twenty-fourth. That's not going to happen, Scott.
I understand that. No, 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 no. Because if the planning board grants him approval of his project, knowing that a couple of these loose ends have to be tied up three months from now when the snow melts. And they're comfortable, they're comfortable accepting the land and his project going forward, you know, two acres.
I have to convince my board to be comfortable that I'm going to enter into an agreement that I haven't even negotiated yet. And on boundary lines that I haven't even seen yet. And I can tell you that the odds of my board saying, yes, go ahead and make that commitment when we don't really know. And we haven't gone through the easement line by line, you haven't, you know, outlined. You've expressed several times that there were lots of areas in the easement that you were very concerned about, they were very restrictive. Those things all need to be worked out.
And I guess the next time an easement comes before this board, it is only take a really long time too, I guess, to go through it, so, okay.
Paul, I think though, and I'm going to speak for myself, and not for the board, in looking at the easement language. I think if we were able to set aside an acre or two to address the parking and those other areas. The rest of the easement, the restrictive nature of that easement, doesn't bother me as much, simply because, because I looked at the easement as a whole, covering the entire parcel. And not being allowed to do things like putting in a parking area or, um, whatever.
So what you're saying is, if we exclude out, I'm going to use two acres, we haven't agreed to that. Two acres that would not be under easement, the rest of the land would go under easement that the board does not feel the need to renegotiate.
That, that's, I'm not speaking for the board, but for myself, yes, I would have much less problem with, with the easement.
I don't, I don't have any problem with that either.
So all of the concerns you had about the town's liability before, those are no longer.
I don't, my, my concern is that we have parking for this and that we have the ability for, for restrooms. That's, because I think this is a destination place for this community to go to in the future. And to me, you don't create a destination, not have parking, not have restroom facilities. And, and everything else, I don't, I don't think that this town is, is gonna put big time structures on the land, I, I don't. And it, and it does allow for structures, your easement allows for structures, it allows for kiosks and, um, that's not a big, a big concern. I learned at our meeting last week that even when you have stewardship, if there's issues, you're gonna, we still have to enforce it anyway. So it's still our problem. I'm okay with that.
Right, so the, the entire hundred and twenty-five acres would still be owned by the town.
Correct.
Right.
Right, okay.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
I was gonna say, because that, that was a clarification for me, because I was under the impression, and it may have been my own misunderstanding, that by giving the stewardship to PLC, that it really relieved the town, or more correctly, the conservation commission, which is typically the steward of our open space, the burden of having to.
Maintain.
Maintain it. But my understanding is that there's a periodic review by a volunteer or someone of, from, member of the PLC to walk the property, make sure that the easement is being followed. And if there were issues, that would just be forwarded to the town to take care of.
Right, essentially what happens when PLC holds a conservation easement, we are being in effect hired as a professional service organization to ensure the terms of the easement are carried out by the property owner, i.e. the town. So it's sort of our job to make sure you are upholding the terms of the easement.
So is there a consensus on the board with what Nick just suggested? That you'd agree to a conservation easement excluding two acres for parking and restroom facilities?
I, I don't have a problem with it, because I, in looking through it, some, I think that are, you know, obviously, Phil, your, your issue with, with maintenance and, and, and that's not in the easement, that would be something that would be outside of that, but.
Well, I mean, it's something that somehow we have to work out. I mean, I understand, I understand Paula's, Paula's spin, the town owns a fleet of ATVs, okay?
Worst case scenario.
Yeah, in the, in the worst case scenario, okay? And maybe we do, but then maybe they're out there for a s- rescue, search and rescue, I don't know. And if we had that, how, how, we have to make sure that they're out there and they can go on the property for that search and rescue.
And, and so that's, as I think it was Nick was saying, that's a use issue, so those uses are addressed in the easement. However, I should clarify that that does not mean that PLC is responsible for providing access roads or anything of that nature.
No, no, I don't think, I don't think anybody even thought that or really brought that up. But I mean.
Yeah, so we would, you know, if there's forestry, the town still owns that land. If they were going to do a timber harvest, there's obviously motor vehicles that are gonna be used on the property to do that, or any agricultural use or.
Well, I guess where I'm coming from on that, if you're allowing police cruisers to go on there because they have, if they, if they can access a road. Let's say there's a road and police cruiser can go down there because they have to, they're looking for, for something. Or if an ambulance has to go down there, or if a, a vehicle that the town has that's used to put out forest fires.
Have you found the paragraph on that, Scott? I'm, you're taxing my memory about what the exact language is. I know that we discussed forestry and agriculture. I don't know if this easement has the exact language for what we're talking about. I'm sure it's out there and can be inserted, but I don't wanna give you a straight answer until I read it.
I have the concern that when everything is in the negative, then you have to prove that it is allowable. That if you just say it's allowable, you don't have it, that, that problem is solved. That's, that's where I was coming from with that, that's all.
You do have grantor may not give permission for the use or operation of motorized recreational vehicles except snowmobiles on the easement area. Except as may be necessary for the accomplishment of the forestry, habitat management, agricultural or conservation uses of the easement, is that what you?
Yeah, so we probably have to include some.
Public safety.
Small, little, yeah, public safety work or something.
And like I said, in, in D, I was comfortable, that was no building structure or improvement of any kind, including but not limited to a dwelling, septic system, tennis court cabin, residential driveway, dock, swimming pool, aircraft landing strip, I like that one. Tower, mobile home or commercial structure shall be constructed, placed or introduced onto the easement area except for structures or improvements that are necessary in the accomplishment of forestry, habitat management, agriculture, low impact, non-commercial, outdoor, recreational, educational or conservation uses of the easement area, including but not limited to a gravel, dirt or other permeable surface road, fence, culvert, barn or shed, and not detrimental to the purposes of the easement, so.
The key word there is necessary in the interpretation of this.
Yeah, you can put a barn or a shed or other things if you're, if you were having cross-country skiing, you wanted it.
Necessary.
Right, but, I guess that, that would be the, that would be the, the key term, but.
Wait, can I, can I just bring it just a little bit? And I think that's, that's been, I think that's been the separation all along is that when the land, when this first proposal came through, it was, they said it was for recreation and in conjunction with the master plan. And for me, the ma, if, if we're going to take this land and we're going to say this is for recreation, I think that becomes that definition of what recreation is. And for me, I looked at it as, as such as, like, like Scott would say, a place to park and then people to go do several, you know, be it snow shoeing or cross-country skiing or hiking. And maybe there's a warming up, maybe it's, because of what you spoke about, we'd have to have restroom facility or something like that. And we're all realized we're talking, we don't know how many years in the future and what, what that brings. But a lot of times it seems like we keep pulling back to just watching trees breathe and I, and I am okay with watching trees breathe. But, but when the town gets involved with that and, and we talk about recreation, I, I don't, that's where I think we're really talking, is where that fit is. That if it's for the community, then the community needs to have some type of access and some type of purpose with it and, and we.
And it's defining, um, and I think this is exactly where we were the other night. It's defining what, for this particular parcel, what is the appropriate use or not? And how does that help be a piece of what the town needs for its total recreational.
And I just wanna make this like crystal clear to people that are watching this, that this site is not conducive to putting soccer fields, baseball fields or a foot. I mean, it is simply not. This is a nature.
Maybe water polo.
Area.
Wetlands.
What?
Maybe water polo.
But it would be a phenomenal hiking spot, snow shoeing, cross-country skiing, horseback riding, all that. It is perfect. What? Perfect for that. And I think, I don't think we're that far off in, in saying that parking and a potential restroom, et cetera, is not really in accordance with that.
Honestly, Scott, where I see us running into a problem is exactly where we were the other night. We're all on the same page of what's the right use for the property. But when we start getting into the language of the easement, there are places where I can't go any further. So I'm comforted when I hear, other than the excluded area, the conservation use of the property seems appropriate. That is easier for me to say, I can probably make this work. If we are gonna start.
Right.
Tearing through, not that we might not ultimately come to a agreement, but we might not, and it will take time.
Yeah, and.
And that's where.
And for all intents and purposes, I mean, when you look at this, there's really only two spaces that you could even.
I'm not good at saying what's two acres, I don't know what two acres is three acres.
I'm just saying, this area, this area and this area are really the only areas where you can even contemplate.
So perhaps what you could say is rather than putting a, um, a size on it, instead of saying two acres, we could say something like excluded area suitable for parking and potential, you know, restroom facilities or something. As agreeable to the board and PLC, so that in the spring we can say, you know what, we're never gonna fit five parking spaces. So we'll have to make do with three.
Supposing put a riding stable and a heliport would be fine.
And a mobile, and a landing strip.
The landing strip.
I think we're good in that, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with that.
But somehow if, and I do believe that this is what you guys want, it's what PLC wants, I know it's what conservation wants. I do not know if we're gonna be able to do that within the timeline for this developer, and it is what he wants. He is an outdoorsman, he does have, you know, conservation inclinations. But by the time he goes back and forth with a couple more board meetings, and then he gets finally a compliance hearing, which may or may not need to be noticed, and then he has an appeal period that he can't get financing until that appeal period is done.
We, we respect that, I mean, that's, you know.
So we need to, I think, that between the two of us, say, okay, our first choice is to do this conservation easement and say, we're, we can get it done. I don't know what, help me with a date. If that's not acceptable to the developer, our second choice is, and our third choice is. Because it's likely that Sue will call Keith tomorrow, whomever would call Keith tomorrow and say, we think we can come to a, draft an MOU and have it in place in two weeks, and he may say no. And if he does that, do you guys want to let it go to an HOA, which is your choice? Or do you wanna have a backup plan? I think it would be prudent for this board to give that direction, because otherwise you might have that choice taken away from you.
It's really not our, unfortunately, I think it's our choice period, I think it's the planning board's decision. You know, we were asked if, if the town would accept the land, we were like most definitely yes with the provisions that we just talked about. If that's not what the planning board sees fit, then they'll make the decision as to whether or not they wanna go with another alternative route. But I think it's a good piece of property for the community to own, there's no doubt. But in looking at the uses of that site, what we, what we talked about for the last hour. You know, we feel pretty passionate about the needs for parking and carving out some of that. And, and if that's the case, you know, it'd be a great resource for the community. So I'd rather see that happen than it go into an HOA. And I'd rather see that going than just to your organization where there might not be any parking or restrooms. That's just my own personal feeling. So, because I think it is a nice, it's a nice piece of land for that, for that purpose, so. Anything else?
And we have no problem pinning that back corner though, right?
No, I talked to Keith about it today again, yeah. No matter what happens, he's gonna have to do that, no matter.
Whoever has the property wants to know, do they have any?
My motion from my board said exactly what you guys said.
Okay, so we're not that far off base.
Nobody is, yeah. I really wish that we had been able to have these discussions without the time issue. And Brian and Keith and Sue and I talked about that today, that it's really imperative that when the planning board is working on open space subdivisions where they may need to bring in a third party, they need to bring the third party in early. And in this case, they probably should have been updating the, or being more clear with the Board of Selectmen. Because you guys are then put in this very difficult position of being under this time constraint and having some valid points. And it doesn't work for anybody.
And this is the first time the board has been asked to take ownership of open space, so.
Then we had the, the, the drainage areas, that threw kind of like a monkey wrench into it.
And again, that is relatively new too.
Yep.
These are new state regulations that are new to us, so.
No, we're dealing with that same thing in New Boston with the drainage.
So, you know, unfortunately to the, to the common observer out there, like, why are they spending hours talking about this stuff? But there's a cost to, to, to the drainage piece and they're just new.
Well, and I think like you said, there's also where are we going from here? I mean, PLC wants to be a partner with the town in making the, our goals and your goals where they align, making those achievable. So every project we work on builds that relationship and that understanding, so the next time it goes a little more smoothly.
Anything else? Steve, Nick, David, anything else? Okay, we're good.
All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Paul.
All right, next we got, uh, Carl. Sorry, Carl. Did you, did you wanna make any type of comment before I start, we started? I didn't get that, okay.
No, we're just here to see how you guys work.
Usually we have like Boy Scouts. Are we doing okay so far?
Yeah, very interesting.
Very interesting.
All right.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Carl.
We have a few issues for public session.
Not as good as the last one, I bet.
No, no, hopefully not. It's been kind of on our plate for a little while, but we had a request from the town of New Boston. They would like to utilize our household hazardous waste facility at our transfer station. Just by way of refresher, when we got our permit to operate a full-time household hazardous waste facility. Part of the permitting process, DES was looking for a place that they could refer people who may have missed their town's collection or, so part of our permit was, we had to have something that was open to out-of-town residents. Which we did, and we have an out-of-town fee for folks that are non-Golf Town residents to bring us material of a dollar fifty a pound. One thing I noticed when I was reviewing this, and, and first of all, let me say that the reason this took so long to get back to the board with, with our input on was, when we started looking at the data, there were several anomalies in the data that concerned me. And I, I just felt like we should look at it a little closer before I came to you with, with a recommendation. And this past week, the Citizen Solid Waste Advisory Committee met, and we were able to talk about this and, and kinda vet out what we were seeing with data. So that being said, one of the anomalies that existed was just our fee. In one place it was stated as a dollar fifty a gallon, and in another place it was stated as a dollar fifty a pound. So I was kinda scratching my head going, okay, which one is it? And then the biggest anomaly, if you look at, I had Alex Keenan put together a, a chart looking back historically at household hazardous waste costs and how many people participated. Up until two thousand and four, we, we used to do a one-day collection. In two thousand and five, we started the, the program that we have today. And if you look at two thousand and nine, two thousand and ten, two thousand and eight, you see that the household served really starts to drop off and the cost per household really starts to increase. That was the, the numbers that really concerned me. If you look at the average cost per pound, our fee of a dollar fifty, um, when you get a participation rate down to twenty-six people, it's really not covering the cost. And just to review the way household hazardous waste is costed. When, when a company, household hazardous waste company comes to your site and mobilizes to your site, obviously there's a lot of precautions that have to be taken, personal protective gear and all that, all that stuff that is involved. So a big part of the cost associated with dealing with household hazardous waste is just a setup charge. It's just a, a mobilization and setup, they're gonna come to your site with the proper equipment and the people to deal with it. When we went to the, the program we have now, the idea was, um, we are lessening the risk to the company and thereby saving money in the setup charge. When they do a one-day collection, they're gonna come with six or eight people, they're gonna set up. They're taking material directly from the residents, uh, and they have to process it, the town never touches the stuff. The way it works now, we vet that material for them, we bulk it together in the appropriate boxes and containers. So when they show up now, there's probably two guys, they come, materials for the most part already sorted. So we're, we're saving that upfront cost of having their personnel there. When I looked at these numbers, I'm not seeing that savings. So we, we researched a little bit with other towns, everybody I talked to is experiencing decreased participation in household hazardous waste. And I talked to three other towns, they're all seeing the exact same thing. I don't know what that means, if it's just an economy-driven thing, you know, people are buying less, people have less waste.
Going in the green.
Going in the green containers or something, right?
Yeah, of course, there's no cost for this, we don't charge our residents for this.
Right.
But, but still, nor do other towns. But they're, they're definitely, everybody I talked to is seeing a drop in, in usage. So after talking it through with the Solid Waste Commission, I think our conclusion was that we should take two steps. One, we have not actually bid this out, like each time these guys come, it's not a huge charge. They have to come every ninety days by our permit. So it's not like it's a big amount of money, so it's not something we bid regularly. It's, it's, we went out to bid the first time, we got a company and we've continued to use the same company for several years. So I think preparing an RFP and just going out and making sure that our pricing is, as up-to-date as it should be, is, is one recommendation. And I think recommendation two, which brings me here with this, with this recommendation, recommendation you, is that we, we adjust our fee and we try to increase our use of the program. And we're talking about several ways to increase the use of the program, first and foremost, obviously, is advertising it within the community. We're talking about a lot of different ways to get the word out to the community that it exists. As you probably remember, two, three years ago, we used to do newsletters. We no longer produce newsletters every quarter, but we have a, a more robust. We no longer produce newsletters every quarter, but we have a more robust webpage, the webpage is available. We're, we're looking at options like maybe using things like Nixle or, we even talked about Facebook, I'm not quite there yet. But we're, we're looking at those kind of social media options as, would these be ways to get advertisement help? So I think the recommendation for the Solid Waste Commission is, let's take another look at our fees and make sure that the fee protects the Goffstown taxpayer first and foremost. Obviously, we don't want the Goffstown taxpayer footing the bill for anybody else. But their recommendation is, we go ahead and try it, see how it goes for a year. See if it increases the participation in the program to the point where Goffstown saves per person. And again, we charge the fee out, the appropriate fee out, back out to the other communities that use it. One of the other reasons I'm in favor of it is, I really want to promote more regional efforts. I think there are times when I hope that we're on the receiving end of a regionalized, a regionalized effort. This is an instance where we could be on the delivery end of a regional effort like we were with Manchester's pilot program. So I just think it's good business for all of us to try to provide regional assistance when we can. That being said, any questions you have, I'll do my best to answer and.
You have anything there?
Yeah, quick question.
Okay.
Carl, when did we start offering the service to outside communities through D, through DES?
It, it was in '05. I, I don't know the exact, know the exact date when we got out, but I don't believe in '05 we did it once.
And on the spreadsheet, how much of this is in-house, in-town versus?
We, we have not yet received any material from out-of-town. It's in our permit, but nobody has brought us any. So everything you're looking at there is all in, in-town.
I guess I can appreciate what you're talking about, the regionalization part, but we got a request from another community that states that they're already paying four thousand dollars regardless of the amount of waste collected. Why, if, if they're gonna contribute, then why wouldn't we just say for three thousand dollars payment or thirty-five hundred dollars, which is less than what you're paying now, we'll take all your, we'll take it all?
I think you run a risk.
But you get more than.
Or you cap it, or you say up to three thousand dollars, you know? And then you're gonna pay us X per pound over that, you know? Because I, I'm hesitant to, I'm hesitant to bring on another community or two because I don't, I don't, I mean, I just don't see the benefit myself. But I, I think if they, if they're gonna pay, then it's one thing. But I don't think we're in it to make another community's life easier per se. Where is that quid pro quo? I mean, there has to be something in it for, for us, you know? And I don't, what do we get in return, other than helping them?
In this instance, I, I can't think of anything.
And this is the same community that walked away from Goffstown on a police dispatch, right? And now we're gonna do them a favor. I don't know, I have a problem with that. And I don't, I mean, if they, they want to pay, I'm good, but they walked away from us for five thousand dollars supposedly, so, yep.
I, I would be inclined to look at, I mean, you, you can see the numbers peaked in 2004 at twelve thousand and then kind of dropped off, now we're estimating twenty-two or twenty-seven seventeen. I would be inclined to do a, an intensive public relations, kind of advertise within the town of Goffstown. You know, the getting rid of your household hazardous wastes, posting the procedures. Do that first and see how this increases before we look at. Out-of-town. To try to get the biggest bang for our buck here, dealing with the community and making sure. And then once, maybe we'll see that it's just plateaued, no matter what we do, we, we don't, maybe we don't have much out there.
And you know what, I don't, I don't have a problem saying, you know what, we'll take your, we'll take three thousand dollars a year from New Boston and you get up to X amount of pounds or whatever. Anything above and beyond that is two dollars a pound. I don't have, because then we're not, there is no cost to.
There's no risk factor.
There's no risk, you know? If they come, if they come in below, they're still saving money. If they exceed the three thousand dollars, then that's, then they would have had to pay anyway. And I don't see a risk there. And it, and then maybe it does promote your regionalization, but it does so in a way that doesn't, you know, jeopardize our, our cost structure. That's just my, my take.
Yeah, there's a couple of things. Carl, when we had the one day a year, one of the reasons why when that was established, come up with the first Saturday in June, so that was a regular day that you remember? And there was, there was that anticipation that you had to hold it and there was a certain day and we did a certain amount of advertising, you know, for that. And one thing now that when we've gotten away from that and you can go anytime that you want, you know, just call up Public Works and you, you set it, make an appointment to go down. A lot of that advertising, a lot of anticipation that it's a special, that there's something special about that, that, that goes away. And when that goes away, that might have something to do with this. So I, I would be inclined also to do something about the promo on that, with it. And just addressing the Scotts issue about, you know, take a certain amount of money and you up, we'll take it up to a certain amount. One of the things that we run into when you, when that fee was set per pound, you set that fee per pound, one item might only cost seventy-five cents to get rid of, but you might get another item that costs three dollars to get rid of a pound. And it's all gonna be determined, the detriment could be is they happen to bring in a lot of that material, that's the three dollar. So that, that's, that's what's tricky on this. And unless you've actually been to one of those sites and had to monitor the amount of money that you had to collect you. Because what happens here is, depending on the material that is brought into one of these sites, that material, depending on what it is, has to go into certain types of containers. And that's determined by what facility it's gonna go to for disposal. Now you may get in three pounds of a material that has to go into a minimum fifty-pound container. And at the end of the day, you're gonna pay for fifty pounds. Because that's what's accepted, that's what the fee is at the final disposal, but you only have three pounds of material in there. And when we looked at some of this stuff up at, with DES, early on with, with these, the goal was that we could have a municipality that was licensed with us, that they could hold that three pounds until they got to that fifty pounds and then called somebody to come in. I mean, that's, that's, that's what was actually behind this.
A couple of quick questions, so we now handle this how many times a year?
Well, we have to enter the facility every three months.
Every three, okay.
Quarterly.
So, so you fill up these, the larger containers every three months?
Right now, the residents, it's on an appointment basis, anytime the facility's open.
And now, so when we just, and I, and I see people go there, they open up their trunks and they, and they take it out. And their, and their, and their cost to them is what?
Nothing. Goffstown residents, up to, up to a hundred pounds, there's no cost.
So I think that's one of the other issues that has to get out there. A lot, a lot of people associate hazardous waste that there's going to be a cost to me. And, and I'm, and I'm watching as the number of figures go down and as the economy gets tighter, all of a sudden you see the poundage goes down. And I'm not sure if that has something to do with it enough, but I'm not sure how clear the message is out there with that.
Well, there is a cost of hazardous waste, this is household hazardous waste, right, Carl?
We can't even take hazardous waste.
Okay.
Right, two different answers.
Because we're just, we're talking our cleaning products, our paints, et cetera, is what we're talking about here.
Right, well, whatever you might happen to find in a barn.
There's a, there's a, there's a big difference in the other hazardous waste.
Yeah.
The other point that I guess why I probably would oppose the New Boston thing, I just want to read one paragraph from their, their, their letter to us. Well, I'll, I'll try to give a synopsis of the, of two paragraphs. They would essentially, New Boston residents would obtain a ticket from us, make an appointment with your facility and present that ticket when dropping off the commodity. In the meantime, we would have emailed you a confirmation that a ticket was issued, since you share the same software system. The idea would be to allow New Boston residents to bring up to ten gallons in a year, and that has been our hazardous waste stay limit. Goffstown would bill New Boston for those gallons. Jerry and Carl thought a fee of a dollar fifty, but now since you've looked at it, it's two. Would cover your costs, including administrative. Residents could leave more than ten gallons but have to pay for themselves for those. I just see this as like an administrative cluster, I, I really do. And I, I just don't see a benefit to Goffstown, I just, I just simply don't. I mean, every time that you have to have a transaction, just to bill these people, to have that interaction, getting a ticket, filing the ticket, logging the ticket, having receipts, we're gonna have to do, it'll be another revenue source. And it's just, I have, I, it would be, if we were to do this, you want to pay us a flat fee of, of thirty-five hundred dollars, which is cheaper than what you're paying now, you can send your folks over, you can have your same limit in place, that's one thing. And that would, that might cut our costs by a significant amount. They save money and we could recoup thirty, forty percent of our household hazardous waste costs. There's no benefit to Goffstown other than that, so that's my take, I'll leave it at that.
I was just gonna reinforce what Selectman DeVanzis said, if you look at the years when we were doing those annual days, the pounds were seven thousand, ten thousand, seven thousand, eight thousand, excuse me, nine thousand, ten thousand, ten thousand, nine thousand, twelve thousand. Then when we went by appointment, they dropped to three thousand, six thousand, four thousand. So maybe it is a public awareness type of thing where it's kind of dropped off the radar and people don't see it once a year or twice a year.
The other thing, just to point out, and I don't know how much of each, but as Phil said, those weights, some of those barrels were half-empty, I mean, they, we were paying by a full barrel even if it wasn't full.
That's the weight.
It's kind of a misleading one-day years.
For, for example, for example, if somebody comes in with half a gallon of chlorine, okay? That used to be sold and used for termites, okay? Can't buy it anymore today. But if somebody comes in with half a gallon of that.
Silence of the Lambs places or something.
Concentrate, I mean, that's big bucks, okay? So this little bit is gonna go into a certain, that might go into a twenty-pound carboy, all right? So we're paying twenty pounds for chlorine to be gone and it might be half a, half a gallon or, or even maybe a pint. But that's the container that has to go, because that facility that it goes to, that's what they take, and that's what we, it's gonna be in there.
Carl, the, for the DES, that ninety days from first drop in the barrel, do we send out every ninety days regardless of the amount we have? Or do we kind of fill a container and then ninety days schedule a?
We clean the facility out every ninety days.
Even if they're half containers or?
That's not an option.
Yeah, no, we can't.
All right, is there any, what actions do you want to take, does the board want to take?
I'd move that we decline the agreement with New Boston.
Oh, second.
Okay, we have a motion to decline the request from New Boston. Any discussion on that, that hasn't already been stated? All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. All those against? Three, two, we will decline.
We do something, maybe encourage the Solid Waste Commission to embark on a public awareness campaign?
Yeah.
Maybe flyers at the transfer station where people come and drop things off to just let them know that the service is available to try to get, increase our usage.
And again, I'm not, I'm not trying to sway this thing in any direction, but I was not in favor of what New Boston's proposal was. If they want to pay us a flat fee, I'm okay with considering something like that. Because I think that would be much more advantageous for Goffstown, other than that, I'm not interested, so, just want to state that. Okay, next is the amendment to the STAG grant, which was for B.
We've kind of talked about this already, but I just wanted to, where this, this is an amendment to a grant, obviously. I want to come back and formally have the, the board sign off on it. But basically, we got two issues here. As you know, we did a lot of work getting that STAG grant for Lynchville and Danus Park in place. The, the usage of that is slower than we anticipated. That's not really what's driving our request, but originally, we assumed that all of that money would get chewed up by the residents and it would, you know, there wouldn't be any available for anything else. One thing that has occurred since is, we found out that Manchester's, Manchester Water Works construction costs exceeded the authorized amount for the Ara project that they had. So we, the town of Goffstown, received a bill for twenty-eight thousand and some change that we had to pay out of our coffers. That was, that was not eligible for Ara. However, DES pointed out to us that we could recoup fifty-five percent of that using the STAG money and that, in their view, that was a perfectly eligible use of the STAG money.
Not the town of Goffstown, but the users paid this?
Well, no, actually, right now, the town of Goffstown paid it. Well, I don't.
But it would be part of the Betterment assessment.
Exactly.
Yes, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, yes.
Okay, that's what I wanted to. I don't have any problem with the town paying, but we're getting it recouped.
I don't think we, we haven't issued that.
That was not clear.
We haven't done the Betterment assessment yet.
I want to clarify that, okay.
And now.
All I know is I quoted it out of one of our budget lines, so.
And Carl's offering another option of getting some of that money back.
Right.
To reduce that Betterment assessment.
Exactly.
Okay. What we also have thought about is, and if you review the documentation that's attached to this, we spent a lot of time on the project staff time. And so I think the thought is that we could also recoup some of that staff.
Which we talked about that before, and this just breaks it all down.
Right, right. So basically, we've prepared this amendment, when we drafted a draft of this, we did send it up to DES and they did send it off to EPA just to make sure that we weren't chasing our tail and doing something. Both EPA and DES are okay with it, so they're just looking for a formal.
And I just, I just want to put it into the, into the record as to why we are requesting the staff time. And just to, we have many employees, we have a town engineer and their job was to do pre-construction home inspections, design plans, specifications, letters to residents, web updates, contract administration, phone calls, street opening permits. We had our building inspector who would review quotes, determine deposits and send letters to each property, process paperwork, perform plumbing inspections and issue final completion letters and approvals on all these hookups. We had a building office secretary who processed paperwork, permits, collect deposits and scheduled inspections. We had a assessing, a building and health office secretary, again, same thing, process paperwork, permits, deposits and scheduled inspections. We had an accountant who was responsible for submitting reimbursements of expenditures. They issued checks to contractors for the federal share of it. And we also had our finance director also submitted for reimbursements of expenditures, issued checks, et cetera. So the total cost to, of town services was forty-five thousand, two hundred and eight dollars and sixty-three cents, which we are seeking reimbursement from that grant. And that would just need to be a motion to amend the grant to that effect. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Second, by Selectman Campisano, any other questions, comments? Okay, Selectman Fortier is gonna recuse himself because he was a recipient of it, so.
Quick question, if these expenses were not reimbursed through the grant, they would be passed on through the Betterment assessment?
We didn't really talk about that. Certainly broken out there, so it could be.
I guess what I'm saying, that this is an opportunity to take these expenses and have them paid through the grant.
Yeah.
Well, what's the vehicle for, what's the vehicle for, if, if the grant does not cover it, what's the vehicle to get it into the Betterment assessment?
The cost of the project?
Yeah, but what's the vehicle, can you just add it on or do you have to go through a process?
We'll cross that bridge though, if we come to it. Okay, so all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That's four, zero, it, that's it.
Four, zero, one of these abstaining.
No abstention, it's a recusal.
So it's not a.
It's just four, zero.
All right, thanks.
All right, next is feedback regarding the county forester request to improve Kennedy Hill. We had this on our agenda a couple of sessions ago, and this is just a clarification on that. Are there any concerns, Carl, on your end?
No, I, I did send Jonathan Newt an email just to make sure that it wasn't gonna happen during the wet spring season because we do post Addison Road. He got back to me that he anticipates that they would, he was very aware, he wasn't aware Addison got posted, but he was avoiding the mud season with his bidding. And he guesstimated there'd be about thirty truckloads with tri-axle trucks, so it's not like this big tractor trailer is here. So he guessed about two trucks a day over a fifteen-day period to, to get the timber out of there.
And it's going over what Addison is going to?
Yeah, it would go out Longbrook, out Addison.
Can't make that road any worse.
When you say, you say nuts, what would be his timeframe?
Well, he, he's expecting to file the timber cut April first, so it would be after our, we lift our posting season.
For you after April is.
How many of these do we have?
Yeah, the posting usually comes out.
That's just what Carl's talking about, that was his email.
What he's just been explaining.
So I, I really don't see any issues with it.
Okay. Nick, you have a question?
I just had a question, I remember Selectman DeVanzis had some concerns with the ledge and the potential erosion.
I had a concern because they were talking about placing gravel down over ledge and then driving over that, so it would seem to me, I don't know the outcropping of the ledge, but it would seem to me that gravel's not gonna stick, adhere to ledge if you're driving over it, so that was the only concern.
That would be their issue, wouldn't it?
Ultimately, it's our road.
I didn't know if it was gonna just make more rock by pushing all the gravel out of the way.
We, we had really no way to get out there and look at, you know, with the snow. But I
Okay, is there a motion on this? To, uh, a motion to permit the county forester to, to approve their request?
Yes, a motion for the county forester to improve Kennedy Hill Road by one truckload of gravel, it's more of that.
Well, it says one truck.
It depends on how big a truck, it's an eighteen-wheeler.
Just to improve Kennedy Hill Road for the, with gravel is necessary to facilitate his timber harvesting trucks.
Thank you. Seconded by Steve, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, five, zero, okay, what we're gonna do now is, we have a piece of non-public to go into, which, Carl, how long do you think this will take?
Five minutes.
Five minutes, so, we're gonna come back here at ten minutes to eight, so we're gonna take a quick five-minute break, we'll do our non-public session and I'll give myself five minutes of buffer, so we'll figure
Ten minutes.
Seven fifty, come back, resuming. Next up on our agenda is our town administrators' report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Your meeting schedule for the next two weeks is in your packet, I'm not gonna go through each one, but as Catherine said, there's no meeting next Monday. And I have a short report tonight, we have a consensus folder with AP warrants, event permit application for Skywatch at the public library on February twenty-third, and a proclamation for a member of the planning board.
Motion to accept the consensus folder?
Is there a second? Seconded by Selectman Pierce, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And I also have assessment recommendations for veterans' tax credits on map two, lot sixteen nineteen, map six, lot twenty-two seventeen, and map thirty-two, lot twenty-five A. Also, the ESS recommends elderly exemptions on map two, lot sixty-four twenty-six, map three, lots thirty-seven C two, one oh three, and fifty-nine dash one, and map six, lot seventeen B dash one thirteen. And finally, a tax deferral lien application is recommended for map thirty-two, lot twenty-six A forty-four.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second. Seconded.
Alright, I'm gonna give it to David, is that alright? Alright, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And that's all I have.
Okay. Next is new business, results of the deliberative session, and for us, there were a couple of changes and amendments that were made to some warrants.
These were the three articles.
Okay, so, let's start with, uh, we're starting in order, which was Article seven, and that was one that was a more of a typographical type error that was, that Selectman Campesano was able, we amended, and that was the Board of Selectmen changed the four hundred and twenty thousand dollars to a net appropriation of four hundred and eight thousand dollars, uh, as the math was, was not correct, and the Budget Committee did not take any action on that.
I think though, since we're discussing that, that we should also let everybody be aware that the posted MS seven was correct. And that the Budget Committee public hearing, the amount was also correct, the amounts were all correct.
It was a typographical error.
Yeah, and I think though, it might've had something to do with the, when we were switching the server.
Right. So I, is there any, uh, is there, because it was amended, and again, that one was, I guess in future, we should not have amended it. You can correct a typographical error without an amendment, I think, but
Yeah, but I think this is the safest way to do it.
It's the safer way of going, but
It is.
Um, is there any inclination, I, I would assume that we're not gonna change our position due to that? Safe to say, anyone want to change?
Oh, it's too late to change.
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry.
That's right, it is.
The ballots have gone to print.
We'll get the recall, no, uh, Article twelve was amended to add DRA recommended addition of the words consecutive and to match the requirements of the elderly exemption for sixty-five-year-olds. This was the article that dealt with, it was a petition article that, that had, uh, for disability exemptions, and again, that's that. Article fourteen was amended by the petitioner and the, one of the concerns with Article fourteen was an amendment to the noise ordinance, and some people may have seen this in the newspapers, I think it was in the Union Leader, what was it, Monday? Oh, no, I'm sorry, Saturday?
Saturday.
Saturday.
Yeah, I believe so.
And, you know, one of the issues, again, we didn't write, we didn't write it, and I know that the gentleman who did, uh, propose it, you know, these are always kinda difficult to determine whether an ordinance or, you know, wording is, is constitutional or not, but according to our attorney, he still believes that it's most likely unconstitutional, so it's probably gonna be a wait and see on whether or not this thing passes, right? Because there's no sense in.
Well, I think you have a responsibility to let the voters know, and your voters guide what the legal opinion is, and to let the petitioner know
Yeah.
before he invests money in promoting it.
Okay, is it possible to forward him, you know, or let him know what?
Only with the board's, um.
Permission.
Permission.
Is it, yeah, was there, anybody have any problem letting him, I don't think there's anything?
Releasing the legal opinion, what you're saying?
Yeah, I mean, it's an email.
Mm-hmm.
I don't, I, I don't think there's anything that's I think, I think Sue made a good point, I mean, I'm not sure whether or not this will change Mr. Peralta's, um.
He could be taking out an ad if he wished to, and next thing you know, it's, it, it passes and then becomes unconstitutional, I mean, he needs to understand that.
Right, I, I think we should share it, that's just my opinion, so we need a motion, if, if there's concurrence, then a motion by the board, or, I can make it to, share the legal opinion of Attorney Drusher with the petitioner. Is there a second?
One second.
Seconded, um, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous.
Comment?
Yep.
I, I will say though, let, let's assume, playing devil's advocate, that this article passes.
Right.
I think what that should tell this board is that there is a desire there for these types of noises to be addressed. And that particular article may be unconstitutional, but we still, as a board, have the ability to change the noise ordinance.
Right.
And so I think it would then become incumbent upon us to take the essence of what that article was looking to do and do it in a legal constitutional fashion, but then incorporate it. For instance, I look at the, um, it prescribes unlawful conduct, renders it criminal by local ordinance of things that are legal.
Right.
But our current noise ordinance prohibits the use of musical instruments and phonographs, and there, it sets conditions for when those uses are in violation.
Permissible.
They're, they're all legal uses, but under these particular situations, they're not.
I think our noise ordinance has a reasonableness.
Right, and what I'm saying is though, that we would have to then, if, if the will of the town is to pass some type of restriction on these ATV chainsaw-type noises, if that's what the end result is, I don't think we should just drop it and say, well, it's unconstitutional, we can't do anything about it. We could work to modify our noise ordinance in a legal constitutional fashion to address those issues. That, that's all I'm saying, is that, I hope we don't put that aside and just simply say, well, we can't do anything with it.
Are you talking about ATVs being used in the daytime?
I'm, I'm just looking at the noise ordinance as it.
I, I think, we're not gonna work the words tonight.
Right, exactly, we need to first see if it.
Right, and I think what, I think what Nick is, is trying to say is that, you know, this may be a litmus test for the community's desire to have a more I don't know, strenuous noise ordinance, you know, in particular against the ATVs or other, other things, and again, I, that's up to the community, but you're saying if it, if it's in the affirmative and people support that, then it would be, it really, it's sending a message to our board saying, you know, you really should be taking a look at this, um, and then, and then propose it again in a manner that is, it is legal, and then let the voters up or down vote that, so. Alright. That being the case, is, I don't think there's any other action that, that we're going to, uh, to take on that.
The next, um, part in our process is to get our voters guide out, and so I will be working on that this week, and I'll email it to you because you're not meeting next week, so.
What does that do to the printer?
As soon as possible.
Do we need to meet next week, not on a Monday?
I don't think so.
Well, leave it to call it a check.
Put the pressure on me, okay, not being sad, it'll be next Tuesday. Um, alright, I just, I mean, if there is something important, I'd rather, you know.
Well, if something important comes up, just call a meeting, that's all.
Okay.
But I, just so you're aware, I'll email you out the voters guide so you can review it.
And you'd back as soon as possible.
Okay.
And I would miss my quality time with.
Have you already arranged the.
Yeah, I have a phone call in.
And now the moment you've all been waiting for, Selectman Pierce.
The bridge.
It is bridge.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
There's a bridge to somewhere though.
Quiet down.
Did you get that, did you get that?
A few.
I got's favorite movie.
Wasn't that the bridge where they built it and then they blew it up?
Bridge over the River Kwai.
Right, and they blew it up at the end?
Yeah.
Alright, back to.
I'm gonna try, I try to be serious here, I'm sorry, I'm just. Three or four sessions ago, you asked me to, uh, look into the possibility if a covered bridge that's presently in Dover, New Hampshire, could be utilized over the Piscataquag River here in the village, to replace the trestle that, river trestle that burnt in nineteen seventy-six. I did that, I went to Dover, looked at the bridge, measured it, took pictures, measured the granite abutments here at the village, and I'll just, I have a summary paragraph, which I'll just put into the record. Same, Catherine, same is on the front, it's left. This, uh, it's a modern-designed covered wooden bridge, it's available from the city of Dover, is, was removed from the Cochico River and is sitting on temporary footers near the river bank. The bridge is structurally sound and can serve as a pedestrian bridge carrying Gulfstown rail trail over the Piscataquag River in Gulfstown Village. It's not a perfect fit, however, the necessary modifications to the bridge and to the existing stone granite abutments are not technically challenging and consequently not expensive. The transport of the structure to Gulfstown has several options to minimize that expense. There's opportunity for volunteer efforts to augment this town project, to disassemble, relocate, modify, reassemble, and install the bridge. The proposal that I have detailed over ten pages promotes the, the shortening of this hundred and fifty-four, hundred and fifty-four-foot bridge by twelve feet from each end, and replacing what I regard as an unattractive solid side rail with an open railing so that the entire bridge can be seen through. The passage dimensions are eight feet wide and ten feet high, and just, I'll add that every member of this bridge is bolted together with steel gusset plates and all the wooden, the wood members, whether they're lower cords, upper cords, or all the diagonal bracing, they're all bolted together. Bolts are in very good shape, you know, so, a whole bunch of impact wrenches and some equipment to lift heavy parts, and it could be disassembled and moved. The extent of disassembly would, uh, has, like I said, has several options to decrease the expense. The, the bridge itself, uh, in its eight, well, actually, ten feet wide outside, outside, and twelve feet high, is too tall for road transport, so the, the actual side trusses would have to be disassembled from the deck to make it transportable. My recommendations, and I've done diagrams showing how the abutment stones could be moved to facilitate the placement of the bridge, how the bearing plates on the existing bridge would just be relocated to a new location and with no lessening of the structural integrity of the bridge. My conclusion in this report to this board is that if, if the board decides to proceed with the feasibility of using this bridge here at Gulftown, they have the, the Department of Public Works, since they're the town engineer and public works, to confirm and update my report, essentially a, a second opinion. They would research the feasibility of Rotary, Rotary Park Incorporated, since they own the Mill Street Abutment, would they entertain the idea of allowing this bridge to be built on their abutment? Towards that end, I'm addressing one of their Tuesday sessions next month.
That would be the Rotary?
Yes. Have DPW formulate what the expenses would be for disassembly, moving, reassembly, and if all remains positive and that's something this board wants to pursue, then send a bid letter to the city of Dover. But the next, next step is to get TPW involved and and then I'll continue the research with the Rotary Club if they're, if could entertain the idea.
Alright, you, I'll entertain discussion?
Were there any other options that you wanted to discuss with us if that option did not come to fruition?
Thank you, uh, Selectman Fornier, the, um, there are other options, this bridge could be used for the Gulfstown Rail Trail, a project for which we already have a federal grant for, to build a bridge over the former Henry Bridge Road. And, uh, yeah, if that were the case.
They could pay to transport, it would be transported by.
The money we have from the grant and the matching portion from the town, essentially, the, that project cost would come out of the, uh, the cost for disassembly, moving, reassembly, modifying, would all come under the, the grant money.
I'd like to, here's another, um, if I, can I just, can I just jump in, take executive license here, but what about, um, over the, your area, that, that trestle? Is that, is that wide enough, you know that Manchester is re, doing that railroad trestle where the debris, you know, it gets stuck in the, is it, is that long, is that, is this the bridge? Does anybody know how wide that is?
I do not know the length, uh, between the abutments.
It's a Manchester property, but.
At the Kelly.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about, yeah.
Kelly Falls Trestle, I don't know the length of that bridge.
Funny, cause I was taking a look at it the other day, there's six sections, and it said the question is how many feet in between sections, I wasn't sure if it was twenty or more.
No, I'd be curious, because that might kill two birds with one stone, because we've often talked about how, remember we, we talked to Manchester about, uh, one of the, uh, the fact that there are, you know, what we call pillars, or the, uh, the abutments, supports, the supports, uh, served to block, um, they were blocking stuff as it was going down the river, and, and if there were no supports there, and that was replaced with that bridge, then you have your rail trail crossing in that spot, and you eliminate a, uh, you know, the damming effect of that trestle.
Min, Manchester is already. Min, Manchester is already active in designing, uh, working, having a project manager design a bridge. And, you know, geez, I don't know whether they.
Okay, but so, I'm just saying, there, there appears to be a couple of different options, so that, certainly the Henry Bridge thing would work, wouldn't it?
If, uh, this covered bridge that's presently in Dover, um, it breaks into three, three lengths. And, uh, the, a center length and one of the end lengths add up to be exactly a hundred feet. And that's what's, would be required at Henry Bridge Road, leaving a fifty-four-foot length left over.
Well, that's a other question. I guess you already answered that, but, uh, the grant that we have for that section, will it include the cost of the bridge?
Grant covers putting a bridge in.
So it should cover the cost of the bridge also, besides transportation, disassembly, and, and that, and do we?
The city of Dover and their email to me didn't mention that there was a cost. Just said, you know, if you desire to bridge, give us an email describing where you're gonna use it, how you're gonna move it, and how you're gonna disassemble it.
No, I, 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 I understand, and I also passed on the conversation that I had with the mayor.
Beautiful.
Dover thing.
It would.
But I guess the question, though, is, do we have the use for a fifty-foot span anyplace else?
One doesn't come to mind, Phil.
There, but it may be something that we would, you know, keep at the transfer station or something. I mean, it's possible.
I still want it to be a bridge to nowhere, but I would just.
Oh.
David, would you approximately, how much would it cost? What would we be looking at to purchase a bridge to span to Rotary Park, to extend rail trail? We were looking to purchase a bridge outright.
Two hundred thousand, yeah.
And I guess where I'm going with that, we, we've got an opportunity. Currently, the grant will pay for the bridge over Henry Bridge. We've got the funding for that.
Yes.
And we have the opportunity to take a hundred and fifty-foot bridge from Dover and span that other area. Let's assume that the Pennard, the, um, the electric street bridge doesn't work out. Whereas if we take this hundred and fifty-foot bridge, we cut it down by a third, we put it over Henry Bridge, now we're, we've, we've addressed one span. We'll never get the money, the funding to buy a bridge to bring the rail trail to Main Street, which is what ultimately we're looking to do, to bring bicyclists, you know, if you wanna make that bridge from Manchester to the village, you really want to bridge that gap.
I, I should let the board know that I, I have, I was at a meeting, a Main Street meeting for the two-hundred-and-fiftieth celebration, and this topic came up, and I, I think you might know this already. The Main Street program is not supportive of this, this bridge idea, because they believe that it, it detracts from the, the bridge that already exists, like that, you know, the Main Street Bridge. And it also detracts from the view. There are concerns about how it'd impact, you know, Pumpkin Regatta and, and other things. So, um, at this point, um, they're not very keen on this idea. So, um, I just wanted that to be, to be known, and we have not. If we were to proceed, I certainly would want to invite, you know, a representative from Main Street, or maybe we should hold a public hearing, because this is, and I spoke to Robbie about this. I said, you know, there are, there are a couple of issues here. One, I was not around in nineteen seventy-six when this bridge burned, you know, but it does have historical significance.
I remember the bridge.
To, to Gulfstown. So if it were to be replaced, it would put Gulfstown somewhat back to what it was historically. But then again, it has been, you know, thirty-five, you know, years.
And I, I've, I've tried to emphasize here, and what I've just said a few moments ago, this, the structure in Dover, uh, could be completely open on its side.
Right.
Except for the diagonal, uh, members, and therefore it would not be a, a total obstruction of downstream, upstream.
Yeah.
So I have one, one question with that, okay, and I understand that you could take those sides away, but I guess the concern that I have, being a pedestrian bridge, and if you have open sides on there, I mean, we have building codes that require railings on a deck. And the reason is they have to be four inches so that kids can't get their head stuck. And if we're going to have a pedestrian bridge, that we are not anyway limiting the access to restrict children, we have no way of doing that, it would seem to me that we need some type of a railing system to contain pedestrians from falling through.
And, and I, I mentioned some sort of a, a balustrade system, uh, post railing. Whether it's four inches between the rails or six inches between the rails, effectively, it's still an open view through the railing.
Steve, I'd.
Okay, uh, first of all, I, I appreciate all the effort that you do with this, 'cause with regarding rails to trails, you know, you've, you've got a lot of grant money that you've brought to, you've worked a lot with the group, and you've actually did all the research and all the legwork with this bridge. And I guess my question is that you seem to think that is the best spot, and I was just wondering why you, why you're looking to continue at that, that space?
For the point that Nick brought out, this is a, this is a covered bridge. It fits the village atmosphere, just for that nature, wooden-covered bridge, modern structure, structurally sound. And it, it basically fits with very minor modifications. And therefore, the, the overall cost compared to putting up a new steel structure is considerably less. And, uh, if, if you, you want to, uh, you can follow up on that by asking DPW to, uh, give an estimate of what the cost would be.
You know, I, okay, Nick, then.
And I was gonna say, the, I, I think we need to open a dialogue with the Main Street organization, because the very principles, I think, that they promote, this bridge promotes. If, if we're looking to revitalize the downtown and attract, especially in the warmer weather, when people are using the trail, this is an ideal means of doing that, to bring people right into the heart of the village. I think some of the modifications that Selectman Pierce has talked about, removing the solid sides and putting an open railing, may alleviate some of those visual problems. It, it provides a means of moving and accommodating more spectators during many of those river events in an area that's much safer than having them line Main Street on the bridge, which fortunately, we've never had an accident, but we try to pack a limited number of people on the sidewalks on both sides with cars passing by, where now we have a venue to actually put people on this pedestrian bridge.
But you can charge tickets to.
But I'm, I'm saying, it, it provides, I think, more opportunity for people to participate and to view those, those activities that we, we put on in the river.
Yeah, no, I mean, you, you have a point, but there's one thing that we're gonna have to make sure. We're gonna have to find out what the load capacity of that bridge is, because you know how many people we have at Pumpkin Regatta, how many people hang out on the Main Street Bridge there? And if you pack that bridge, you only have two abutments over that, and what's the capacity of that bridge, so that might be an issue.
The, uh, the bridge was designed for eighty-five pounds live load per square foot.
Live, uh, live load?
Live, live load of eighty-five pounds per square foot, which I think if you do the math for the, the size of the deck, it works out to be something like, you know, average weight of a person, you know, four hundred and fifty people, shoulder to shoulder. Plus thirty pounds per square foot snow load, twenty-five pounds per square foot wind load. It will support a seven-thousand-pound moving point load.
Vehicle?
That's engineering language. It's a, it's a snowplow.
But it's covered, so they don't have to plow it.
But, but, yeah, if I have, if I may have another question. Let's just say if that wasn't coming to fruition and, and that wasn't working out, what the other options are, you would look at it for Henry Bridge?
Yes, uh, when we would, when DPW goes out for a RFP, for a project manager for the, the whole federal grant, that RFP could say, give serious consideration for the cost of reusing this Dover Bridge. And if that is not workable financially, then give us an alternative design.
My follow-up to that would be then, and I'm gonna piggy, uh, piggyback a little bit off of Chairman Girl's set. When I look at the rails to trails, the big project they're trying to do, honestly, is connected from Manchester through. And we already have the grant for the Henry Bridge. Would this be a consideration? Or would you work with the Manchester Group, or maybe you're, maybe you're not in favor of it? I'm just curious if that was a fit for the Kelly Falls.
Steve, I, I'll call the, uh, my point of contact in the Manchester Park Department and let her know that this bridge is available and what its dimensions are, and, uh, let her carry the ball from there.
The other, I'll throw this one out. I mean, we have had discussions with the county for a long time about some county land that's owned on the other side of the river. And, uh, I don't know if that's, I don't know what the span is of, of the Piscataquag in that particular section, but, you know, remember Sue, we had discussions with the commissioners about a piece of land on the other side of the river, but there's really no way of getting there?
Where are you at?
This was, um.
The Land Development Surratt that was held last summer?
Yes, yeah. There's, there's land on the other side of the river that you'd have to, the only way to get there would be through, I'm trying to think of.
Silver Lane.
Silver Lane, but if you, in terms of accessing it, you could also access it, as long as you had, you know, the ability to, of a bridge to get there, which everyone always said that's unfeasible, but I don't know what, now it may be feasible, so.
Steve, um, you, you are talking about the county complex land?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes. In the Land Surratt, it was discussed that, uh, practically all of the land that's north of the county complex buildings, essentially north of the rail trail, best long-term use is recreation. And it was possible, it was allowable to have a, a bridge over the Piscataquag from, you know, one side of the county land to the other side of the county land, because the, the land on the north side of the river is relatively flat and, and could be a park setting.
But it's just.
How do you, how do you get there?
How do you get there?
It's, it's, it's landlocked, and so the only way to get to it is from the south shore.
And we're talk, and for, just for, for my understanding, we're talking from the base, what I would call the baseball field down there?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Just a quick, one of the other complicating issues with the, um, the Manchester Bridge is the, the Kelly Falls Bridge is, it is a historic structure. So it's more than just getting a bridge to span that. They may not wanna remove that because of its historic nature, actually removing that bridge.
I'm not aware of the historic nature of this bridge.
Yes.
Having jumped up in several times, right?
All right. The, so the question is, I think the, the first step is really the Rotary, because if Rotary, the Rotary Club owns that abutment area, and they're not willing to have discussions, even entertaining this idea, then all bets are off. Am I correct there?
You're correct.
Okay, so why don't, is there, unless there's any objection?
I'm a scheduled speaker, and I'll, I'll do that, and I'll bring another report back to the board.
Okay, and then we can take it from there. In the meantime, um, once we hear back from you, then we can have discussions with, uh, with Main Street.
Well, can I just ask you a question? If we don't go forward with it over here in the village, would Plan B be Henry Bridge?
Over Henry Bridge?
So is one of the other?
I, I think, I think, I think Henry Bridge has also a very viable, uh, solution. One, I think, granted, we have grant money, but it's a nice-looking bridge. It would serve the purposes of, of crossing that gully. And, um, the grant would pay to, to remove the bridge, and it's, it's, you're recycling, I mean, it, it really fits with what our community is all about. Recycling and taking something, and I think it would be a great use of this bridge and a great use of the grant, and it would also save the grant, um, and maybe it could be, maybe we could use it for something else, you know? We could, we could ask the grant, or to, there's, there are other projects that we have that we could further develop the rail trail if we were to save, you know, a hundred thousand dollars on a bridge. It's worth, it's worth a try.
As a Plan B.
As a Plan B, yeah.
I guess the question that I'm asking is, one way or the other, would we be, are we interested in the bridge?
Yes, I, I, I think, I think that this, I think this bridge has not.
The reason why I'm saying.
Multiple, uh, purposes in this town.
The, the reason why I'm, I'm saying what I'm saying is because if Dave has, goes, was it two weeks? In two weeks, he goes into Rotary?
Yes.
Wait for Dave to go to Rotary for two weeks.
Yeah.
He makes a presentation to them, then they make a decision. I mean, by the time this goes on, time goes on. I would rather be able to get back to them and let them know that we are, because I, when I had the discussion with the mayor, there was another community that was gonna come down and look at the bridge.
I, I think, I think we should let Dover know that we are extremely interested in the bridge. We have a, uh, we have a few options on how to use it, and maybe present to him, you know, what we know now. It's like, here's one possible use, here's another possible use, here's a third use, you know?
Do we have the ability to move it, if, if it's disassembled? Do we have the, the trailers and the vehicles to be able to move it?
Yes, we do. The Public Works has the vehicles to move it.
So I guess going along with.
I would, I would, they would have to rent a, a forklift or a, a front-end loader at Dover to, to hold up some heavy members while they're being unbolted. But that's, that's, in grand scheme, that's a minor expense at the Dover end.
So I, I think going along with what Selectman said is that we should just move forward, tell them we're interested in the bridge, take the steps to have it moved. We have plenty of.
Space.
Space.
Right.
At the transfer station on the, you know, somewhere in there, and just put it there, and then we decide on what ultimate location it's gonna go to.
I should see the mayor of Dover on Friday.
That's why we don't lose it.
I happen to agree with Nick. I, I think that, off the top of my head, we have just talked about three potential, almost four potential uses for this bridge, and we haven't even brainstormed with anyone if there are any other areas of the community where it would span, uh, span anything, so.
Bernard, the, the, the wetland at Bernard.
There you go.
Yeah, you have, you have that, you have the property that we just talked about. You have the property that we just talked about. If you were to span over that dam, you would also have.
You know, the irony.
I'm just telling you, there are plenty of.
Know what the irony of this is? The irony of this is, is the reason why that property is developed the way that it was, because you'd have to come in with a bridge to go over the other way, so here's the perfect scenario to possibly come in and access it from the other side.
And, and it would be beautiful, too. I mean, so I, I, I think we should, you know, obtain it if we can.
I'll, I'll pass that word on and find out what we, what step we should take to, uh.
Do we need a motion, or just?
Motion to authorize Selectman Devanza to negotiate the.
Well, I'm not, I was gonna, I was just gonna find out.
I'll give you the, I'll give you the authority to do it. Yeah, yeah, negotiate terms.
For the covered bridge?
Maybe, maybe David would like it. He's been, may I go with you?
I was Selectman Devanza and Selectman Pierce.
We've got a lot of effort in this.
Where I was coming from, where I was coming from was to have a. If the ma, if, assuming that he's there, that he's present.
Memorial.
Friday, that I'd have, I'd, I'd have a discussion with him to find out what, what's the next step we need to take with, with, with them.
All right. So is a motion made to allow Selectman Devanza, Selectman Pierce, to negotiate terms for the acquisition of the Dover Bridge? That was made by Nick. I'm gonna second it. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous.
One final comment?
Yeah.
Would like to commend Selectman Pierce on this report. Yeah, it was very, very good, comprehensive report.
So our. I can't, I almost pulled a Fred Platte there, so. I was gonna say we'll cross that bridge when we come. Okay.
Because you were gonna say we're getting a bridge to nowhere.
No.
Only sidewalks.
Well, where's the bridge right now? It's in Dover. Where's it go?
Yeah, okay.
It's on the side. It goes nowhere.
Old business. I have one. Um, I received an email from a subcontractor who has not been paid with regard to the, uh, roundabout slash drainage, or our drainage project, which.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Is this something we should be discussing in public?
No, it's public, yeah, yeah.
But is it something we should be discussing in public or not?
I don't, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna frame it.
I'm wondering be, i- if it's, if it, if it can affect the reputation of.
I think, I think I'm good. I'm, I'm, I'm serious. So I, I have received an email, and I believe soon I have received a similar email from, uh, one individual. And I believe Sue might have received a similar email from, uh, one individual, and I think that there might be a few others. I think at this point, from what, from what it's my understanding, in terms of what we have signed off, is that we have now paid. The lorry for all of the construction work that has been done, that has been met to our satisfaction. And that only a small amount of money is being withheld, and when I say small, I believe that's under one hundred thousand dollars is being withheld. For spring type completion or work that was not done to our satisfaction. So the vast majority of funds, as of this evening, when we sign the warrant, have been, will have been dispersed. What I would like to do is to, um, if we receive future inquiries from, uh, from subcontractors. Is to send them a letter, generic letter, it'll go to anybody who, any subcontractors that may come, and to say, we have, um, we have paid. Our, our commitments to the general contractor for services rendered, a very small amount, we can even put that in the letter. Has been, um, held back in, in terms of, of, uh, full completion to our satisfaction. And that if you are requesting payment, then you should be contacting, uh, the general contractor for that, for that payment. And this way, um, there is no issue with regard, you know, to the town, we have paid, we have paid, um, for the work that's been done.
Where you're coming from?
Yeah.
But I also think that in the contract, because there are a lot of contracts, um, that I'm involved with. In order for me to get paid, I have to submit a sworn document. That I've paid all my subcontractors up to that point, in other words, the money that they're giving me up to this point. That this money here is going to all my subcontractors, so there might be some obligation on our behalf. That we have an ability to make sure that they get paid, I, I don't know.
I don't think that would, well, now, now we may be going into the public discussion, so.
How much, if, if we have money going out tonight in the warrant.
Yeah.
How much of that may be, or some of the emails?
No idea, no idea.
So I, and.
But that's not our responsibility.
Exactly, that's why I'm saying maybe, I mean, these emails that come to us really aren't our responsibility, because it's the contractor's responsibility to pay his subcontractors. That's something between the subcontractor and the contractor.
But I want, I would want that subcontractor to know that, and to know that the town has met its financial obligations. For work that, for services and work that were rendered, and we deemed, um, to our satisfaction. And a very small percentage is not, has not yet been paid pending completion this spring. And again, it's under one hundred thousand dollars, I, so it absolves, I guess, you know, the town and from, or, you know, from anybody coming to us saying. Hey, you owe, you know, you haven't paid your bills, we've paid our bills.
Quick question, are we receiving a lot of this?
There, well, there, there have probably been about a half a dozen in terms of phone calls and.
I'm saying that may be as a result of the money that's going out now.
Right.
It may.
I, I've been telling him to wait till the end of the week that.
Exactly, and once, and once that's out, they may go away.
Call back.
Because those issues will be dealt with.
Okay, but I, I just wanted to be consistent though, and if we do get further inquiries after this payment is made. That they should be, hopefully we're directing them to the general contractor to say, that's where, that's who you've, that's who you've contracted with.
Right.
And that's who owes you the payment, not, not the town of Gobstown, all right? Okay, that was it for me, any other old business?
Yes. This is the, uh, Federal Transportation Enhancement Grant for the rail trail, uh, effective on the tenth of February. Uh, the Department of Transportation gave us the notice to proceed letter. So we're, we're cleared, um, we signed that agreement, municipal agreement a few boards ago. And, uh, on the tenth of February, the Commissioner of Transportation signed it, so we're, we're free to go forward. Uh, the next step is to attend a meeting at the Department of Transportation, laying out the scope of our project. And briefing officials at the Department of Transportation. Towards that end, um, our town planner, Brian Rose, Public Works Director, Kyle Querem. Myself is your representative for the, uh, Rail Trail Development Committee. We're meeting tomorrow morning to put our heads together and come up with our presentation for the scoping meeting, and then scheduling that meeting. Good news.
All right. And last, if there's no other old business, we'll move on to, um, a committee of reports, which would be sewer. First, which we just signed off on a whole bunch of stuff tonight.
Then I'll keep it short since you've already read it, um, uh, the sewer commission is looking into upgrading, uh, some sewer lines. In the area of Temple Court, uh, that would be, uh, next spring when the ground is visible. There, the sewer project in Pernardville, uh, there'll be a planning meeting. To understand how to, uh, reroute traffic and detour traffic. Uh, during the final construction season of about three months long. Anyway, so planning meeting will be held very soon, and to work out how the traffic will flow during the final season. Finally, um, there is a contract.
Ask you a question before you head onto the, you say planning meeting, who is going to be involved in the planning meeting? Because I know that there was a meeting held, I believe at North Garden for the local businesses, is this, are they involved in this? Or is it representative of the businesses involved?
This is the, uh, the contractor, the resident engineer, DPW staff, sewer commission. Going over all the plans for how traffic's gonna be rerouted.
Is there any involvement or any representative from the business community that is on, that is, that is, that is, that will be involved?
There was not last time.
Can there be one now?
I will carry that message forward.
Or two, because I think we, we got, we as in the town, who really is not really managing this, not our project. It's, it's the sewer commission's project, but ultimately we bear a lot of the brunt of the criticism of it. I just wanna make sure that the businesses are involved in this. Right, and we talked about, um, the possibility of nighttime, uh, construction to alleviate traffic. Which would be, which require a waiver of the noise ordinance for the Board of Selectmen. And if we could get some advance notice on that, so we're not scrambling, you know, come April or May. Because if, if we are go, it's a catch twenty-two, it's residential and it's a commercial zone. In the sense that, you know, the businesses, in order for them to, to prosper, obviously having, you know, late night connections makes sense. But then again, it could keep residents awake, so it's, that's, that's where we, that's where we struggle. I think this is something that really is gonna, because these are all the cross connections, right?
Right.
And this is where, this is where the road is literally gonna be ripped up, you know, right smack in the middle, so I, I think.
The cross connections are perpendicular to the line of traffic and therefore, uh, are more of a barrier.
Yeah.
Quick question, is our DPW involved with any of that project? Do they oversee any of it, do they, nothing, so it's just sewer commission, so DPW's out of that completely, we don't have any staff?
Sewer, sewer commission hired oil tanna.
So we don't do anything with that one?
No, but we get the brunt of it.
We get, we get, we get the people, the, people come to the Selectmen to say, what are you doing with traffic?
They're, they're adding their advice, they're adding their knowledge and advice on the project.
Who's that, who's that?
DPW.
The, the commission is, is welcoming the, you know, the input.
No, no, I understand, I mean, so just advice on how to handle the traffic, but DPW's not involved with any of the ongoings of this project?
From a technical sense, you're right, it's a sewer commission contracted project.
No, I'm just asking a question.
In wrapping up, uh, there is a contract for relining of a sewer line on Pershing Street. And they're making, there's been a, a closed circuit TV inspection of that line. And waiting for good weather before the company actually puts the lining on the inside of the pipe, that's it.
What street was that, excuse me?
Pershing. Pershing Street.
Okay.
Okay, I hate to be a pain, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna respectfully request that this board send a letter to the sewer commission. Formally outlining exactly what we just talked about, is I don't want there to be any confusion that this is a sewer commission project. I don't want there to be any confusion that this board desires that they get, um, businesses involved with possible traffic disruptions. And that if they, if they believe that it is necessary to have nighttime connections, that they need to come before us. Before April or whatever, I, I think it's imperative that just be put in writing, official, not just a conversation in the minutes. Because last summer, I don't know about the rest of you, but I heard an earful from the business owners in Pernardville and. And, uh, and rightfully so, and I, I, I think it needs, needs to be crystal clear that, um, and I, and I respect the board. The job that the commiss- sewer commissioners do, but I just wanted to be really clear that, um, they need to involve the business and the residents. In this, in, in this, in these decisions and keep them abreast, and what's their communication plan and, so.
Can I make a suggestion? I think from the beginning of the project, in the beginning of the project, there were a lot of issues, but when the project got midway. Things improved, we had that discussion, things did improve, and I would just, I would anticipate that, that they would continue. The way they, on this, go forward with this portion of the project, the way they did towards the tail end of the project.
I'm gonna agree, the reason I kept asking if DPW had any involvement is because they took a lot of hits last year on this, and they had no involvement with the project. Everyone thought it was a DPW project, and they would talk about when they would see construction and people standing there, they're thinking it was DPW, and it, and it wasn't. That's, you know, this one, you know, it's just a chance to, to speak that out.
So, I guess Sue, do you follow where I'm coming here, you know, in terms of drafting a letter to sewer, to the sewer commission? And, and also, I, I think, you know, the highlights are, obviously involving the, 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 the businesses and, and maybe. And the residents in terms of what the, the traffic impacts, you know, may be. Secondly, with the possibility of nighttime connections and, and will a waiver of the noise ordinance be, uh, be necessary? And what is their communication strategy, uh, to notify the businesses and residents well in advance? As to what these delays are gonna be, and the reason why I say that is that if I'm a business owner and I know that this is gonna affect me. I might do some things differently as I planned for the spring, or the, whether it be inventory or my advertising. I, I have to adjust, you know, and.
Second piece of the puzzle, Kelly Street Bridge does the second half this year.
Right.
In fact, they didn't even quite finish the first half, you know?
Yeah.
That'll be shut down to one lane also.
And, and possibly with, without any major road projects of our own, next year, we could utilize the, um, variable message boards. In the Pernardville area to at least assist business owners, you know, notice stating that businesses are open or.
Yeah.
Lining detours.
So, uh, okay, I, I, I just wanna, I, I, we just got a lot of, um.
That's a lot of good ideas, thank you.
Lot of heat last year, and I wanna learn from my mistakes, so. All right, uh, solid waste, you kinda went over a lot of that, too, right? Any pearls of wisdom from Fred, he was at the meeting, right?
Uh, I'm reading minutes since I was in, in session here with this board when they held their meeting. From the minutes, uh, solid waste commission, uh, they, the members recommended that Kyle Querem. Establish a fee of two dollars per pound for hazardous household waste, and he would take this recommendation to the Selectmen.
Oh, by the way, did we, we never took action on that, and we should take action on that.
Well, if you're gonna increase your fees, you have to do a public hearing.
Right.
Right, so, scheduled.
So do you, do you wanna go forward with public hearing or?
Why don't you check with Carl, see if there's any other fees that need to be adjusted.
Other fees anywhere else that have to, but, um, I think that we could at least take a vote on, on putting that, bringing that forward. For public hearing and to a time to be determined, so I'll make a motion that we, uh, we take the department head's recommendation. That of the solid waste commission of, of establishing a two dollar fee per pound for hazardous materials, uh, for non-residents.
Well, it's, yes, for non, non-residents.
Residents, non-residents, not, residents don't pay anything, and that, uh, for a, a public hearing to be determined at a later date. Is there a second to that?
Yes, I'll second that.
Steve.
Mr. Connor, so we, just to make sure I have clarity here, so with New Boston, we decided that we would not go forward. And venture with New Boston on this project, correct? But yet we're still taking non-residents at DPW?
You do, yeah.
Could someone explain?
We have, when we put in for the original grant, the agreement was that if a homeowner from a community called DES and said. We don't have any hazardous waste pickup here, where can I go to get rid of this?
I'm selling my house, it's urgent.
I was just trying to, I was trying to understand if this worked right, thank you.
Their, their previous rates were a dollar fifty per pound with a forty dollar minimum, is he doing away with the minimum?
Didn't say, he didn't say that.
Oh, you can find that online.
Forty dollar minimum?
Okay, so all those in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
Okay, finally, uh, DPW provided a graph of, uh, how many tons per month are recycled? And plus just regular trash, and it works out to be on the average, um, for solid waste trash. Four hundred and twenty tons per month, and in recycling, we process a hundred and seventy tons per month. And that's about a, that's an average over a whole year.
What's the percentage?
And it's, it's running flat with previous years.
What's the percentage breakdown, do you have, do they give that?
Percentage for on a.
Usually we, we have been running like about a thirty.
Yeah.
Thirty percent, twenty-nine percent recycling versus solid waste.
Four twenty and one seventy, is that what the numbers are?
Yeah.
All right, I'll do it.
Sure I can do that?
I don't know, I have a calculator, I'm pretty good with a calculator.
You are, huh?
Yeah, that's about all I can do.
He's the Rain Man, the Rain Man.
I was just curious to see how we were doing percentage wise.
Thirty.
Thirty percent.
Twenty-eight.
The lines are flat.
Okay.
Okay, and then, um. Concut Co-op, um, you know, we've entered into a municipal agreement for bringing our recycles to a new facility.
So where do they start?
Construction is due to start in April, the facility will be online in spring of two thousand twelve. Um, now some bad news, we were anticipating that Manchester would be bringing all their recyclables to this new facility. Manchester has signed a ten-year contract with Pernard Waste. So the Concut Co-op has lost that very desired contract.
Sorry.
Thanks, Nick, well.
I think I brought that up when we were voting on.
And, uh, then, uh, and finally, at the present time, we're getting fifteen dollars per ton for our recyclables. From the Casella operation, that's it, solid waste.
Next is planning board.
Planning board met last week, and there was one, uh, item on the new business, uh, that they attended to. And, uh, there was a discussion, uh, that was the Harvest Christian Church, uh, had a request for a time extension. Because the ZBA, uh, had not concluded on their deliberations. So, uh, the, uh, time extension was granted to March tenth.
All right, and is there any other business?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to adjourn, seconded by Selectman Devanza. Those are quick, the second of the night.
I don't, I didn't even.
This was a one-hour meeting?
All those in favor, say aye? Hey, I had a nine o'clock goal, I.